All right, welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'll start the meeting with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, we will move on to any amendments to the agenda. David?
No amendments.
I will note that our student rep, Nourali Desai, is out ill tonight, so our discussion on student voice will be a little bit limited until she can participate at the next meeting. She did indicate to me that she sent some suggestions. I don't have them in my email, so maybe we can incorporate those and get them sent out to the rest of the board. I don't know if you have them or not.
Yep, certainly can. I don't see them, but...
Okay, so we'll make that modest amendment. Any other amendments from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to announcements.
Mm-hmm, and so by your place, you have some announcements. I'll just go through those quickly. South Burlington High School will be hosting a pre-holiday academic tour on December 4th at the high school. This is their ninth year. It's one of the largest tournaments in the Northeast, over 60 teams, four states are in attendance. They're looking for individuals to help volunteer, so if you're willing to help out in any way, you can contact Eric Stone at school, and again, his number is posted here, but if you're willing to do that, his number is 652-7535. He would welcome it. Parent-teacher conferences are upon us, and they'll be happening next week, Monday and Tuesday. Just important for folks to note that, and we hope that those occur, and we feel that's really important for our students and the connections with their parents. The next Steering Committee meeting is going to be December 8th, and again, this is fairly new. We're just actually firming this up now at 7:00. It's going to be in the South Burlington High School auditorium, and the topic is a discussion on the legalization of marijuana. There'll be some folks there from either Skyping in or FaceTiming in from Colorado or in-present from Colorado, as well as other folks from both school and city participating. This, again, will be a Steering Committee meeting. Steering Committee meeting is made up of both the City Council and the school board. Actually, yesterday, we had an administrative outreach, our administrators. This is our continued journey. We try to do these two or three a year, visit our area businesses and talk about what we're doing, what they're doing, and opportunities for the future. We were pleasantly hosted by our friends Youth Spectrum Services in downtown on Pearl Street, and they were gracious in hosting us. We learned an awful lot. We have an awful lot in common around what we do. I think they benefited from what we shared and around our things that we're working on, and we had a great brainstorming session on opportunities for the future. And last but not least, a homeless shelter is currently being proposed at 372 Dorset Street, which is next to Canoe Imports. That's just to the north here of the middle school property, and I would like to invite individuals, the individual who's organizing this, to come to the next board meeting to be able to share a little bit about what he is thinking. It's not expected to go in front of the Developmental Review Board until late December or the first part of January. He's interested in getting your feedback, but I said in order for feedback to be given, he kind of needs to know a little bit, you know, folks need to know a little bit more about what is being proposed. So, that's all I have for announcements.
Is the shelter part of an agency?
I'm not really clear on that. I know that, in this case, John has been part of other homeless shelters in the past. Doesn't appear to me that it's connected to an agency. It does have some support, or has had support. Some of the others that he's helped start have been supported by other organizations, but I don't believe so.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, Student Voice, Roles and Responsibilities. And we did have a discussion at the meeting, David, you weren't at the last regular meeting, and shared the SBA's pamphlet on the student voice and kind of roles of student reps on boards. The way that we left it was we were going to wait to hear back from Nourali on her suggestions, and she's very interested in kind of participating and crafting what expectation should be, roles, responsibilities, a selection process, feedback process, kind of how to solicit feedback from students across the district and so forth. One of the things that I had proposed to her, and I guess in lieu of, or maybe in addition to some other discussion this evening, was the idea of proposing a subcommittee that would work with Nourali and potentially other students to craft a recommendation on all of those things, expectation, roles, responsibilities, selection process, as a non-voting member. So, I don't know if there's other feedback from board members, or do you want to weigh in on your thoughts on the subcommittee approach?
I think there would need to be someone from the high school administration involved in that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, the subcommittee makes sense to me.
You okay with that?
Fine.
So, we'll appoint Martin?
Yeah.
Good choice.
Is that something, David, do you want to circle back with high school administration first?
Sure.
And then, I think there would be plenty of board members interested. I know I'd be interested...
On being on that subcommittee?
On the subcommittee, yeah. Obviously, we couldn't be more than two board members on that.
Yep.
And then, plan to come back to the board with some specific, either observations or recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments on student rep? Or voice? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, City and School Collaboration.
Okay, our meetings are ongoing. I already shared with you the December 8th meeting, which is a Steering Committee meeting. We have had our ongoing meetings, Elizabeth, myself, Kevin Dorn, and Pat Nowak. Many topics are discussed, particularly, I think, the topic this time was budget and legislative activity, one of which was obviously the legalization of marijuana. The other one for us, primarily at the school side, was looking at Act 46 and some of the parameters around that particular legislation, around inter and intra-district mergers and debt bond repayment, as two areas that we think are pretty significant for us, you know, in our current state and with our budget. Those were the primary pieces. There certainly are some things that the city sees that are in need, but that was our primary focus. The majority of our time really was brainstorming about and understanding and learning about the legalization of marijuana and the potential impact to our community, but also, you know, other communities as well, and how it affects our students. So...
Is there a date for the budget, the shared budget?
We, yes, those dates are, those dates were shared, I think, in the, two more board meetings ago, I think we had that. I know it was in the calendar.
Hi.
I can't recall the specific date off the top of my head, but it is in the, it is there. We can continue to highlight those. As I said to some of you earlier, I definitely know there's a need to get kind of a master calendar together around some of the various activities that are coming up, one of which is the December 8th one that we just talked about, coupled with other, some of the other known meetings that we have. So, we'll be working on that.
Yeah, and I think that it's important, I think, to share a little bit of the genesis on the conversation of legalization of marijuana. The city attorney, Jim Barlow, and the city police, Chief of Police, Trevor Whipple, participated in conferences in Colorado and in Chicago with their peer groups, and the information they've come back with is really in the context of unintended consequences of legalizing marijuana, and there's a lot of emphasis on the edible side, but the impact on law enforcement, the impact on emergency room visits, on poison control centers, on just the economics.
Detection.
Exactly. So, there was a host of unintended consequences that have come up in these professional conferences, and the city and David and I, representing the school district, felt that it might be appropriate to really just seek some input from those folks who are living through the, those unintended consequences and kind of figuring out what they're doing. So, I've been in touch with the Vermont School Boards Association, whose actual, they have not taken a position or had an informational session on the issue. That is scheduled for their December meeting, but they are reaching out to their counterparts in Colorado as well to see if they can identify some expertise that might share what some of the impacts have been in school systems. And there's literature that suggests there's increased school expulsions, but, you know, the goal is to really just make it informational at this point. I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, I think, again, we're looking at the same side, on the superintendent's side, to have some representation, so what are the known kind of situations that are out there? So, again, it's really hoping to be an informative process. We do feel that the legislators, you know, will be interested in participating, or at least listening to the conversation, as that's going to be upon them, you know, this next session. So, important.
And I think the goal is to follow up pretty quickly with a legislative breakfast.
Right.
Sometime in December, where we talk about the couple of areas that David mentioned, that we'd like to make sure our local legislators are informed in terms of our interests as both the city and school.
Do we already have that scheduled?
I don't, I don't think that one is scheduled, but I know...
We had some tentative dates, but I'll go back to the kind of the calendar. You've got budget, you've got board meetings, and you've got some other stuff going on. So, there is a need, I know, and we typically get to about this time of the year every year, and say, "We kind of need to get a total calendar moving," and so, I'll work on it.
And I think the city's taking a slightly different approach, which is checking the legislators' availability first.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we'll move on to Agenda 8, the Superintendent's Report.
So, I've highlighted some things in here. I want to give you some updates on the Rebel name. I'm going to give you an update on the South Burlington School District Wellness Committee, the solar array at the South Burlington landfill, and VHI update. And so, I know that not everybody in the audience has it, so I'll kind of read through this on the Rebel name, and Elizabeth, I'll let you then take it from there.
So, giving you, the board, an update on currently where we are with the Rebels' name. High school administration has been reviewing the board's recommendation with an eye on moving and assessing what actions and activities will be feasible with respect to the positions expressed by the board regarding the Rebel name. They are also looking at other issues that relate to our educational and social mission, including but not limited to equity, school climate, racism, respectful dialogue, hiring, professional development, et cetera. With the support of the administration, the South Burlington High School students are forming the SBHS Student Diversity Union, or Student Diversity Alliance. Students at SBHS have expressed their belief that they would benefit from an opportunity to discuss topics like the Rebel name, debate it in a structured environment, and debate it in a structured environment. We are happy to support them in this student-directed endeavor. The students shared the following core beliefs and goals as part of their proposal for this addition to our co-curricular program. So, the Student Diversity Alliance seeks to educate people who are actively challenged, challenge racism and prejudice, raise awareness on diversity issues that may, that many people may be unaware of, and show students how they can help work on these issues, establish and ensure safe places to discuss issues and find answers to their race-related questions, make race-related issues more accessible and allow students to feel more comfortable discussing race, help peers see how we may contribute to their stereotyping racism or bigotry, either knowingly or unknowingly, sponsor activities around our community focused on race and diversity, as well as other issues. Three, the high school administration intends to survey students to get their thoughts and ideas about possible action and activities as we move forward. Once these surveys are completed, the high school administration will provide the staff with the results and ask them to provide ideas regarding actions and activities as we move ahead. Four, the debate and/or reaction to the board's formal action remain prominent in the print media. As before, valid points exist on all sides of this issue. The administration was never under the impression that the issue would be put to rest by the board's formal action, and is instructed are being, are beginning conversations with our current students and staff about moving forward. It remains important to us to seek to listen and to understand all voices as we move ahead, and I will continue to keep you, the board, informed as we continue to move forward. So, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
So, have we identified leadership of this co-curricular?
Currently, right now, it's really rests with Patrick and his administration to kind of formalize that. There's been nobody named to head that group up necessarily, as you know, it is a co-curricular leader.
But will Patrick serve in that capacity until...
Somebody will serve in that capacity. That's not totally known. Patrick will, you know, certainly keep me posted on how that's going to move forward. Usually, we look for an individual staff member to come forward and help, you know, help be part of swarding those students in that regard. Many, many examples are in play currently in our co-curricular program where students have come forward to the administration and asked and requested, and they have been, you know, fairly, very quickly filled.
Other questions?
As you talked about, like, item, kind of, three, about the survey and then the actions coming out of that, do you have any idea of timeline and when you expect to do the survey and take those next steps?
I don't, I don't really have a timeline from Patrick. I know he's working on that. I think there's been a fair amount of activity, you know, that's been going on in support for students and listening to formulate this, so, again, this will, I will keep this in front of you, including kind of where they are with the group, where they are with their survey, you know, and just overall, you know, climate condition, et cetera.
Other questions or comments from the board? On number one, David, this, the goal was to kind of look at issues that relate to our educational and social mission, including but not limited to equity, school climate, racism, respectful dialogue, hiring, professional development. The specific recommendations here are, seem to be focused on the student population and were, and I know there's some work being done by the group that Suzie is working with, but was there anything further discussed around items like hiring, professional development, staff training, anything like that?
Yeah, and I think, you know, there's a laundry, there's many items that cross-correlate. I didn't list all those other ones. Certainly, you might like that, though, I understand. You know, the additional areas are extensive, and so, it's part of what I've said, you know, et cetera, you know, hiring, professional development, et cetera.
Well, I think, I mean, for this to be a comprehensive plan, I think it needs to go beyond, or it needs to describe all of one for the district, supported by the activities that are being pursued, particularly at the high school level.
And there's things that you're seeing that are missing. I'm just trying to make sure. You mentioned hiring.
Professional development.
Right. And so, those are listed there, but you're wanting to make the connection...
Yes.
Right, to the, to the other components here. I'm just trying to make sure I'm reviewing board's recommendation and then I'm moving forward.
The student diversity thing, I think is a good, good beginning, but it needs to be broader than that. That's, I think, the main point.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, so, you've got a couple of things here. One is leadership timeline and kind of more comprehensive to include all the items in one, from a follow-up standpoint?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to, actually, I think you're still on your Superintendent report, sorry.
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of compressing on this, sorry. Again, I provided you a write-up on the, kind of, the district wellness, and then there's also some additional follow-up in your board questions. So, again, I don't necessarily, I'd rather not read through that necessarily, but we've given you some dates and times in your report around when that group is going to be coming together, and the role of the committee, and then, as I said earlier, there was some follow-up questions to, some specifics on that as well. And those were, no description kind of of the scope and the role of the committee, so we worked to provide some additional information in the board questions that should be by your side.
I'm not seeing those.
Yep. Hmm, this one.
Oh, I've got it right here. Got it, okay.
Thank you, Julie. And we also have Suzie in the audience, and we don't, so, again, if there's specific questions around the Wellness Committee and the work that she's doing, again, remember the Wellness Committee is looking at supporting our mentorship, our mindfulness, and our "we all belong," which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, if there's questions or anything you want to add, Suzie, while the board...
I'm grateful to be here and to listen.
So, I guess I have a question. How does the Wellness Committee fit within the Steering Committee work? The Wellness, maybe I'm reading this wrong. The District Wellness Committee, is that a subset of the Steering Committee that I know I belong to?
Yes. The Wellness Committee is a, they're, the Wellness Committee is newly established this year and brings together many different wellness initiatives happening all over the district, nutrition, physical wellness, mental wellness. So, it's comprised of people like our PE departments and our nutrition services and school nurses.
And is it inclusive of students and staff?
It is. We don't have, we have staff reaching out to invite students to participate, but we've just met for the first time last month, and our next meeting's coming up, and then we'll be working in subcommittees off of that. And there'll also, there are also community members, and also community partners, the Recreation Department, Community Justice Center.
Great.
We, in the past, of this committee, there's been an obligation to have a wellness, again, there's a wellness policy. We've satisfied that requirement, and I will just say, we've satisfied the requirement. I'm happy to say that with Suzie coming on as the Wellness Coordinator, again, with oversight around mindfulness, mentorship, and "we all belong," kind of under the wellness, under the umbrella of wellness, this fit nicely. Again, with my staff talking about where this fits, we're able to put a whole lot more focus on making sure we're doing more than just meeting, meeting the requirement around the wellness policy.
So, where does the wellness policy come from?
You feel, you can talk to them a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. So, the wellness policy is, we get guidance from both national and state mandates, and truthfully, wellness policies in public schools in Vermont look fairly similar to one another. There's a template, and we've satisfied in the past what was required, but it's very inspirational to look at what our neighbors are doing in, just as David just described, reaching for that excellence, and what do we want our wellness policy to be? What's our dream? And there's a lot of energy on this committee to, first of all, we need to satisfy federal mandates to ensure that we continue to receive funding, and then, look at what's our dream vision, right? What, how can we really create a movement that better reflects what, the good work that's already happening in here and what we want for the future, already happening here in our district, and what we want for the future?
The policy does provide some very specific, you know, direction and guidelines. It's obviously, as Suzie said, nutrition and exercise and requirements, right? And so, we typically ensure that we meet that, and, but there's, there has been much need for more engagement, you know, with our nurses, with our nutrition service people, on not just an annual or a semi-annual basis, but a more regular way. And since we are school, we would like to have input from our students, and so, many voices that play into that, including our parents, our staff, et cetera. So, again, this is not like a huge, huge, you know, time-consuming commitment, but it is something that we feel is really important around ensuring, you know, positive success. So, again, we give you this update, not to, you know...
So, is the focus here, the population of the district, its employees, its students, is that the focus?
It is. We're looking at who makes up our community, so that would be students, staff, families, and then, community. That's the reason for the Rec Department and Community Justice.
So, it transcends the district and reaches out to the city?
It does, but with the greatest emphasis, of course, on our students and staff, and we'll look at the ends policy and how that intersects social and emotional learning.
So, in these periodic meetings that are scheduled, are they public meetings, or are they for this group, or what's it for?
Yeah, it's a great question. We haven't determined that as a committee yet. Right now, we have not made them public, but we've only just begun the work.
Okay, so at this stage of the game, they're organizational, getting the, getting the gang together, so to speak?
That's exactly right. And we've identified urgent issues, important issues, in our dream vision. So, we've done that work, and the next step will be subcommittees to focus on the urgent issues.
So, you see that one, that one final thing, it's looking for a school board member. Remember, I talked about all those calendar events you have? So, you can talk, or unless you want to assign Martin that one, too. He'll never be gone again.
That's what he gets.
He might fall into the unwell category if we assign him that.
Yeah, so anyway.
Well, I will ask the board to consider if this is an area of interest, and I think Suzie sort of described the kind of expertise and interest that might be relevant to this group. If this is of interest and you can accommodate in your calendar some or all of these meetings, I know she would be interested in having board representation, so, just ask you individually to consider that. And I guess, it sounds like it's premature to have goals, and right now, the goal sounds like it's largely compliance, but are you envisioning, Suzie, kind of having, establishing some healthy climate goals, or some, something that really reflects? I know we always are hearing, or not always, we do hear occasionally about, things like PE activities have been kind of continually whittled at over the years for students, and offset by a lot of co-curricular opportunities, but, and I know we've made a pretty significant investment as a district in mindfulness, but are you anticipating there may be some efforts to establish goals for our various stakeholder groups?
I think that would be, I think it would be very fair to say, yes, absolutely. I think the more clarity the members of the group can have about where we're headed, the more effective we'll be as a committee. These, you know, you can imagine, you know how busy all of you are, and this is a committee made up of people who have very busy schedules, a lot of responsibilities. We, they, they have a lot of energy, a lot of ideas, so I think the clearer the goals can be, the better, better for all of us.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions? Good, thank you.
So, moving on in my Superintendent's Report.
We're still on that.
I know, I'm sorry. I think I've filled out some stuff here, but, so, the other, the next item is the solar array at the South Burlington landfill, and I'm just going to give a quick, brief overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to John, and we also have Justin Rabidu here with Director of Public Works to talk with us as well. But in general, this was for the board to know, and the board knows this, but to the audience, well over a year ago, we entered into an agreement to provide and erect solar on the currently capped landfill, and with the idea that a solar array would be there, and given that metering, the city needed to have additional partners, and because of the use of electricity, we are a user of electricity, to be an equal partner to do that. And so, we began looking at that. It was extremely advantageous, or advantageous for us to look at it. We entered into that process, but the funder actually fell through, and so, we're back at it as a result of... And so, we're back at it as a result of, kind of, we believe it still makes good sense, and we want to have this back in front of you. There is a decision time here, it's not tonight, it's a December, the first December meeting, is that right, John? To have an agreement between you folks and the city in order to move forward. So, without further ado, I'm going to let John, you know, kick it off, and also have Justin assist. Thank you for being here, Justin.
I know that the city has worked diligently on this. I know Alana Blanchard and, and the city attorney Barlow, and Justin, I would imagine, too, have, when David said that the contract fell through, it wasn't because Solar City went out of business, it's because we didn't like their terms. So, so that's why it's back to you again. The resolution last year wasn't, was to get that contract done, but it was, it just wasn't going to be. So, Alana Blanchard has, has been working really hard to get it to a point where if we act in December, the array still has a chance, solid chance of getting erected next year and providing some savings to the district. Some of the things that they negotiated were how the credits would come to the city and they were, and to the district, and it wasn't to the advantage of either organization, so. The second thing I want to know, you to know that Bob Fletcher, our attorney, Cecil Page and Fletcher, is reviewing this right now, too, so we're not going to go blindly into it with a recommendation. He'll have an opinion. David and I are meeting next Tuesday, so. I'm very thankful I have you here, Justin, your Public Works Director and engineer.
Thanks for having me. I believe there's, there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of questions asked by the district, answers have been provided, whether, whether or not they're clear enough or they're all the answers to all the questions you have. I guess that's kind of my role here tonight. I, generally, in our forums, we don't repeat all the stuff we've written to you, but I'm glad to go into any level of detail or, or answer any questions. I do want to emphasize one point that John made. Our prior partner, who we ended negotiations with, was unwilling to assume not even their share, a modicum of the risk associated with this type of use, to the point where we were no longer comfortable working with them. We're very, very happy with the group that's in front of us now. They specialize almost exclusively in northeast landfill solar applications, as well as municipal and school-owned properties. So it's all they do. They recognize as well that over time, these systems, just like a light bulb, become less efficient. They're not looking to pin us down to a theoretical return on their investment. So it's a very willing partner, a very experienced partner, and a partner that also focuses specifically on what we have to offer, a municipally-owned landfill with a partnership with the school district. You may have heard, in fact, on the news last night, the fear about, at some point, northern Vermont is going to lose the ability to transmit all of these renewable energies, and there might be a cap placed on solar, wind, et cetera. Landfills are specifically exempt from that cap and that transmission concern. Obviously, here in Chittenden County proper, there's no concern that my two sewer plants and your school district buildings will continue to not consume energy, so. It's a very stable partnership. The finances have been explained, the risk, I believe, has been explained. Our greatest exposure lies within a 25-year period. If power rates can, if power rates nosedive 3% a year, which for all of us in our personal lives would be great, because at home, you'd be paying less for power, however, the way this agreement is structured, we're basically buying power at wholesale and selling it back to Green Mountain Power at retail, to put it in real simple terms. The notion of purchasing a net meter credit, both the city and the school will actually be writing checks to our solar partner. The money will come back to us in credits on our utility bills. The school department has seasonal uses, so what happens in the summer, if you're using less energy, you get to bank those credits. They don't, they don't disappear at the end of the month. The, the savings projections are in here, they're, over the term of the contract, they're quite substantial, approaching seven figures. Again, that's all speculative on the commodities market, but we've given you a range, we think that's from conservative to aggressive. And if we can get in, you know, the sooner we can get in the ground, the sooner we can start realizing savings. I pay almost a quarter million dollars a year just to power two sewer plants, so it'll be a, a great relief to us. And, you know, this is the royal us, this is the people in the audience, these are the city's taxpayers. So there are real quantifiable, demonstrated financial benefits, in our view, to this project.
I think the estimates that Alana showed me as I was working with her in the last few weeks, everything's conservative here. I know that if we had some, some solar companies in here, they might say, well, rates are going to go up 3% per year, per year, per year, and they wouldn't consider a, a rate decrease. I think Julie asked a question, and we got all the Green Mountain Power rates here documented.
Back to the seventies, yeah.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, they haven't gone down year over year. There has, you know, there's some rates. Our taxes go down sometimes, so you know, it's, it's managed, but, so I want to emphasize that, too.
So you talk about the, the primary risk being that volatility of the rates. What are the other risks?
Um, the other risks, frankly, are on, are on the city, because this facility's going to be placed on a landfill that's subject to a post-closure permit by the Agency of Natural Resources, the state of Vermont. So the risk for us are, we are required twice a year, we have been for, since 1992, to perform twice-annual groundwater monitoring, monitoring samples of the landfill. If we start identifying higher-than-permitted levels of some background chemicals and metals, for example, benzene, arsenic, the type of stuff that is normally in a landfill, A&amp;R has the ability to take enforcement action against us. That enforcement action is not described, other than they're, they reserve the right to do so. No one believes that that enforcement action would entail actually digging up a capped landfill to get down to the groundwater. Most likely, those actions would occur down at the base of the, at the bottom of the landfill, where all the water's collected. The solar panels themselves are projected to simply be on the flat, quote, "developable" portion of the landfill. So, risk outside of if rates drop, which I think there's one example going, or, I'm sorry, a handful of examples going back to the seventies. Risk is, I believe, on the city's part with regards to any environmental issues. However, we've been successfully operating and monitoring, to the extent that you operate a closed landfill. We've been monitoring this landfill for 23 years, and we haven't been in that position, but we, we feel the need to kind of raise our hand and say, in our permit, this is where our biggest exposure is. We feel it's a very, a very small risk. It's worth mentioning.
Thanks.
I know there were some issues, Justin, with the original negotiations on, and this, you kind of alluded to, the previous partner wasn't willing to assume any risks, but some, some issues that are foreign to me, but included land shifts at the landfill that might reduce the efficacy of the solar array, things like that. Is this partner, have any of those things built in that are outside of...
They do not. The Solar City, which your resolution specifically mentioned Solar City, was the prior partner. They wanted us to lock into a theoretical number, a price per kilowatt hour today, that was arrived at simply using a calculator, based on the existing conditions to the best of everyone's estimate. Obviously, landfills settle, so we were unwilling to accept the inevitable risk that would be occurring. And even if their, let's say their calculations were optimistic, which would be to their benefit, if they received less of a return in terms of power generated, they would be looking to the city and maybe the school department to make them whole for that delta. And then there are all sorts of, there were about five same issues where they went budge on, and it really made no sense to us to continue talking to these folks, so we, we didn't. But the group we're working with today, they simply want to be paid for the energy they produce.
So one of the things I noted is, the first time the board took action on this, it was to authorize David or his delegate to negotiate terms of a contract. I'm noticing in this one that what will be presented to the board in December is a fully legally reviewed and ready-for-signature contract. Is that accurate?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, we have been working with Altus Power Systems for about five or six months. Thankfully, our previous work with Solar City, it wasn't a total flush. We were able to start well beyond zero. The city, on the city's side, both legal and from a technical standpoint, the contract has been vetted, I believe that's what Attorney Fletcher is doing for you. So, to the extent that there are negotiations, David certainly has been aware that we've been having these discussions, but we, we, we view it as fully negotiated at this point. If there are questions about the, the financial aspect of this or anything else, between now and your December meeting that you would like to have information on, we will certainly get it to you. And if, if David or members of the board, we can, wish to, we could arrange an offline discussion with our part, with our solar partner.
Well, and I think that, I think the original proposal was, was looking at about 15,000 a year in annual savings, and I'm seeing with a range of rate increase and, or decreases from a 1% decrease to a 1.5% increase, it looks like average annual savings, I assume this is just the district, John?
Yes.
It ranges from about 19,000 to 29,000. So, one of my obvious questions is, why so optimistic savings compared to the...
We are, the net metering credit that we have negotiated with Altus is a lower wholesale number than Solar City wanted, and all those numbers are in here.
So that's where it comes from?
Yeah, and the money we make is the value that we sell the power back to Green Mountain Power, which is still cheaper per kilowatt hour than they can produce. So if you look at the city, the school, Green Mountain Power, and Altus, there are four entities that have a financial stake in this, and it's, you know, in the theoretical and on paper, and based on everyone's experience, everyone wins financially. Green Mountain Power has to produce less energy, they're able to buy energy cheaper than they otherwise would. We make, we save money on our utility bills, and we have a partner that's putting out a very substantial upfront capital outlay, but over the 25-year life of the system, they're comfortable that they'll be getting their return on it as well.
So you mentioned 25 years. 25 years is a long time.
Yes.
Are you comfortable that we should enter into an agreement that has that kind of duration?
The, the technology and where they are today, certainly, solar panels as we know them 25 years ago aren't what they are today, and they won't be in 25 years from now. But from a viability standpoint, and from, from solar power being a renewable source for decades to come, the city's certainly comfortable, and that's where the market is taking us. The city has solar arrays over by Dorset Park, just to the north of Scatering Rink. We have one in the southeast quadrant of the city. There are other privately-owned solar arrays that we've worked, we've partnered with, so the city is very aggressively behind the value of this type of a program.
Okay, but the question I asked is, are you comfortable with a 25-year term?
Yeah, the city council has authorized a city manager to sign the contract, so I think that, that speaks to their level of comfort. I don't think any one of us can predict what's going to happen in year 23, you know, with the panels and with the technology. Altus reserves the right to enter onto the property to make upgrades to their equipment as well, as technology improves.
So was there an option for a shorter-duration contract?
Um, it, the option was also tied to the price that we're purchasing the, the wholesale kilowatt hour at. So, shorter contract, they wanted a higher guarantee upfront, there was less of a return, so this is where we ended up.
And it does sound like there's a, an early out, but that it would be fairly pricey, is that accurate, John?
That's my understanding. They would want to be made whole for any outstanding debt for their capital.
And is the school's agreement linked to the city's agreement? I mean, is it "and"?
Yes.
Or is it "or"?
No, it's "and." We, we, we need each other, because individually, we do not consume enough energy to make it financially viable, so it's one agreement.
But on the other hand, the two entities together consume all that they would produce?
Uh, the way it's forecasted, yes, and they've, they've sized the array based on our consumption, and, and also the net credits that are available on the market to be transferred.
And our, our net meters, our meters would be, involved here would be the high school and the middle school, so, that's, but then, if there is additional capacity, we'd include our other meters, but that's, those are the primary meters, where we'd be consuming...
Right now, for us, we have credits on some of our, both our sewer plants, as well as some of our traffic lights, for net metering credits, and it looks, it looks exactly on Green Mountain Power statement the way you would think it would look. So, from accounting standpoint, it's pretty straightforward.
Is there, is there any cash flow issue? You indicated that the district and the city would pay the solar company first, and then there'd be a credit that would appear on our...
So our understanding is that, that billing occurs on a monthly basis, so you might be fronting by 30 days, you're, you're basically buying your power 30 days before you would otherwise be. I don't know if, I, I'm not, I can't speak to whether or not that creates a cash flow issue on the city behalf, it would...
Our, our, our consumption, or at least our budget for electricity's district-wide's $380,000, so you divide that by 12 and by a number of schools, we'd be, we'd be fine.
Okay. Right. So it sounds like the next step would be a pretty thorough legal review, which, is that in progress?
It is. Bob has the, the documents, he's asking questions, I forward him all the board questions, so he wanted to know what issues would come up, and I'll convey him the questions that you asked tonight also. And then David and I will meet with him Tuesday, so we can have, so you get feedback enough time before the next board meeting.
If you're a follow-uper, and please send questions along, or if you want us back in December as well.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
I just, I have a little bit of presidential experience in investigating this, and for both the city and the school's perspective within the legal configuration. A, some kind of statement that if the solar company comes up with some brilliant change in five years, that would enable them to get much more power out of the, that there is some way that you can benefit from that as well, because otherwise, they'll just get the improvement, and you'll be stuck with your numbered.
You mean a change in technology?
Some kind of change in technology that allows the company to greatly benefit, you should be tied into that as well as possible. And the other thing is just thinking about what happens in year 26, that if there's all of a sudden, maybe everything will be fantastic, but if all of a sudden, the school board will be in a position to have to have a big check to write because they don't have this anymore, coming up with some kind of year 26 plan?
I kind of saw that was addressed in here, I believe. I think that got addressed.
Their, the Public Service Board, Board permit would require them to have a dismantling fund, so the taxpayers will not be stuck with that. Or in year 26, the city could choose to purchase the array, or Altus could decide to continue and propose a new partnership.
Thank you.
Okay. Great.
Can I use 10 more seconds of your time while I'm here? Sure. As Public Works Director, I'd like to remind you all that from December 1st to April 1st, you are not to be parking on the city street between midnight and 8:00 AM. You, the city council's direction to the police department is to tow, regardless of how many snowflakes are out there. As well, we all have children, and we all love our children, and they enjoy athletics. Could they please not enjoy their curbside basketball athletics in the winter, and please get your portable basketball hoops off of the curbs? Because our snowball trucks will hit them, and our insurance company will deny your claim. Those are a couple of my PSAs.
That is clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that public service announcement.
So Justin, you hit the sun and the solar array, and then the winter months. And just to let you know, Justin and I, on, on any kind of potential concerning morning with the schools, or, Justin's always been available to me at the wee hours of the morning to talk about...
I think David sleeps less than our plow guys, because my wife will say, who is calling at 3:30 in the morning? It's David Young.
But he's, he's great, he's a great, great partner for us in ensuring our kids are safe, and the buses are great, so, thanks for being here, Justin.
See you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. I know, so I'm still on, and I know, and that's all right.
Hey, I'm here.
I am, I...
I am, I am. It's self-induced mostly. The last item I have is a VHI update. And for those folks that don't know, this is our Vermont Education Health Initiative. VHI is our insurance provider for healthcare. They provide healthcare to all of our district employees. And I want to just provide you with a little bit of an update on where we are. As VHI, as most people know, are in the process of related healthcare. They're in the process of launching new healthcare plans effective 2018, and the district wants to understand its options as a large employer to continue to provide quality healthcare benefits to its employees by evaluating options outside of VHI with Blue Cross Blue Shield to include total planned cost. The firm, NFP, previously Hackett Berlin and McDonald, has been hired by South Burlington School District to assist with the process. So, again, just wanting to make that known to folks. Again, not that we're unhappy, but we're out in looking at options. And so, I just want to make that, make that known.
If I can add a note, VHI is not exclusively healthcare, they also offer other benefits to a pool, including dental and long-term disability and wellness programs, to a pool of about forty-seven thousand active retired educators and their dependents. So, it's been a great relationship over many, many years, where that pool of employees has been represented competitively. Those plans will be changing January of 2018, and I think David is really just looking at options.
Yeah. Got it.
All right. Move on to Agenda Item Nine, Master Planning and Visioning Update.
So, we're happy enough to, again, continuing this discussion. I think everybody is aware that, on two iterations now, I've talked to the board, September sixteenth, and again in October, around the proposal that I have recommended. But, that was coupled with the Task Force recommendation. And I think really important is that, because of the Task Force elongation of that process, you didn't really get a chance to hear Frank Locker, the hired consultant, to help us really work through that process. And so, tonight, he's with us. You never quite know where Frank is, or where he's been coming from, but whether it's been Mexico, or Rhode Island, or wherever, but he's here with us tonight to talk about master planning and visioning, particularly from his vantage point. And again, I really would encourage the board to ask a lot of questions of Frank. He has a presentation that he wants to share with you tonight, and then open it up for questions. And I think he has about, you know, forty minutes or so, if you'd be, so...
I have fifty minutes.
Oh, yeah, I know, but I cut you down. I'm trying to borrow a little bit.
He used up your time, Frank.
Do I sit?
Well, you can do whatever, you can sit wherever you wish. I think that's perfect, right there, if you wish, yeah.
I'm going to have to...
Yeah, we'll move, yeah. So, Frank, welcome. And I'm not sure that you know, maybe just a quick intro to the board around the table. Again, Frank Locker, and maybe just start over here.
Patrick Fladuka.
I'm Dan Fleming.
Elizabeth Fitzgerald.
And not with us tonight is Martin Malone, so, anyway. Frank, it's all you?
All right. Let's see if this remote works. Just plugged it in. Not working. All right. Would you like to stand up there? Yeah. Okay. Does this need to be closer to me?
No.
No? Just fine?
This is recording, actually, so it doesn't amplify.
Okay, very good. All right. If you could do the first slide. David asked me to put a slide together explaining what I do, and I do have the job as an educational planner, and that's a rather unusual job. It allows me to have the wonderful opportunity of working with school districts and doing work that's all oriented to the future. Future of teaching and learning, future of facilities planning, future of strategic planning. So, in that work, I do, I focus mostly on 21st century learning. I do visioning, leading visioning concepts. I did that with you in 2008. I do master planning, that's what we just finished with you, or it's still in the works. Professional staff development, and then, as a segue to converting educational ideas into facilities ideas, I work with architects. And I would have to say that when we're focusing on 21st century learning, the educational deliveries are very different, the goals are very different than they were in the twentieth century, and therefore, the buildings we want that best support 21st century learning are a different kind of buildings than we have had, and that we all know, because we went to school once. So, it is broad-ranging work. I work nationally and internationally. However, locally, I did work with you in 2008, and I did visioning for Burlington High and Bellwether School over in Williston. Current projects now range from California through other parts of USA, and then a couple of other countries. I do a lot of speaking. This is my passion, and I need to get the word out. Recent speeches, Bogota, Colombia, and I was in Mexico last week, and they've covered such topics as deeper learning, which is the new word for highly effective changes in educational delivery. There's a whole series of measurements on it, there's a new Hewlett Foundation study. If you want to Google anything, Google deeper learning, and you'll get an abundance of things. Other topics covering the whole range of educational planning. I used to be a university-level teacher, I currently have a course at Harvard, which is actually intended for architects and educators to jointly figure out the future and create concepts together. I run project-based learning conferences, and I was Planner of the Year of the world's largest organization for facilities planning. So, that's what I do. Oh, and I'm awful glad to be back here. I lived here in 2004, and at that time, I wasn't working for any of the school districts, so working with you, and then, in 2008, and here again, in Burlington, and the Bellwether School, it just warms my heart, because your community values are so good. So, thank you. For tonight, I thought it would be good to quickly share with you how the Task Force, what was constituted, what it was made up of, the issues we covered, and how we made decisions. And I know they have handed you a very big package that may seem overwhelming, and probably rightly so, because you have phenomenally nuanced issues and very concerned citizens. I do want to share with you just a snippet on 21st learning, 21st century learning, give you some considerations related to school size, both operational and educational, give you some considerations related to structuring schools, you know, pre-K4 versus sequential schools. And then, I want to show you a little cameo on one school in the nine-hundred-student range, and then a couple of others that I've got in planning. Okay? Slide. Okay. So, Task Force. This Task Force was conceived, oh, are we...
Back. It was slow to respond.
Yeah. I can't speak that fast. Oops, here we go.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's fine. I think it was the third slide.
Yeah. It's really funny. Okay. One more, right?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay. I believe we worked on planning the launch of the Task Force, or the project, for probably six or eight months before it got going. And, you know, it was a really good joint city and schools venture. Kevin Dorn, the city manager, proposed the idea, and was fairly insistent, that we actually have a Task Force. And the logic was, is that the issues are so complicated and so nuanced and interrelated between the schools and the, and the city, that we couldn't do the usual thing of thinking up some options and then launching them to a community meeting, because you can't get in enough depth to really work through all the connections. And as it unfolded, he was absolutely right, and I applaud him on his insistence to create up, to create the steering committee. So, we had thirteen very expert and very committed residents, and the operative word here is they were long-term volunteers. I don't know that they knew they were going to be long-term, but it certainly evolved to be that way. The broad range of backgrounds, educators, businesspeople, former superintendents, city managers, the whole nine yards, and they did display a phenomenal degree of commitment. If you could do the next slide, I'll cover issues considered. So, here's just a snippet of the things that we considered. We did explore and understand demographics, including getting population enrollment, and population projections as part of our enrollment projections from a national-level demographer. We looked at the impact of the airport, the city center development, of course, this was one of the provocateurs of the study in the first place. Talked about the nature of the city, the lifestyle, what makes it attractive, how to make our decisions align with making it a better and better city to live in. Of course, we got the affordability issue, and everybody's concerned about that, and equity across the city, so that people are treated fairly no matter where they live. On the school side, we had work done by the educators, and they outlined their values and beliefs and experience, we listened to their guidance. We talked through operational efficiencies, educational effectiveness. We embraced the issue that had been worked on for the prior year on the location of the fifth grade, and as you know, it had not really been settled, and we moved that a couple of steps forward. We explored the pre-kindergarten issue, which is a whole set of complicated components in its own right, and we looked at equity for students, nowhere other where they live in the city. Okay? Next slide. So, our process over time, we did have a planned agenda when we started, and it was all pretty clear to me, but we had six meetings, and as the Task Force did their work, they slowly extended the number of meetings, and by my count, we got to nineteen. And I know there were a few more after, after my participation. We did have educational considerations, city considerations. We held a community meeting to understand community opinion, and it was regarded as advisory, again, from the notion that the issues are so complicated that we can't just have a short, two-hour meeting and expect people to be able to dive into these and grasp them and wrestle with them in the same manner that the Task Force could do. When all was said and done, we worked through numerous options, I counted more than fifteen, we had site plan diagrams, cost projections, and John and Annette were working on doing impact on taxes, so we had lots of information. Final round, there's the letter, the letter designations for them, if you could do the next slide. So, oh, this does not, okay, this was, this actually has a blue background, so you'll have to imagine that. This is a slide taken from the Task Force meeting, and it was part of my presentation to them. And this was the day that we made the decisions as to which were the most viable options. So, this was our crescendo meeting after getting through sixteen earlier Task Force meetings. You can, I'm not going to read all these things, but you can see that we had a refresher, I had some, my outlining logic, et cetera, for how we were going to make the decision. What we actually did is, I gave out three-by-five cards, and we looked at all the options, discussed them, and then people voted for their top three choices, and then we sorted out the cards while they were on a break. So, very instantly, we got to a well, a very, what's, a very articulate understanding of what people were thinking of, most, or more articulate than if they simply raised their hands yes or no on different choices. And I'll show you the scoring on that in a second. So, they were asked to rank them. So, we took a break, and then we had some votes, and I'll share with you those votes in just a second. So, basically, the scenario was, you know, outline the territory, have people rank them, then discuss them, and then have confirming votes to assure that people were really agreeing with what was unfolding before them. Next slide, please. This also is a blue slide, this was presented in that Task Force meeting, and I was asked to outline my thoughts, because as the facilitator or ed planner, I was basically like the keeper of the record, the note-taker and the overview guy. So, some things that I highlighted to them is that we had heard from our educators. I had done a workshop with your key leadership team at the beginning of this project. We also had two of your building leaders on our committee, and they were, you know, they were very good in making the connections. But, equity across the district was an issue for them, a big issue, and they know, you know, they highlighted very demographics and the fact that our small school sizes, elementary school sizes, separate kids and give low cohorts of kids and make it harder than larger buildings would do to achieve that equity. They outlined and recognized that cost of operations would be lower, and that we could have more effectiveness if we had, and they preferred one elementary school. There you go. Airport disruption has eroded at the Chamberlain population enrollment, as you know, and lots of noise, so concerns about that as a continued site for a school. The central issue, the sale of a central site was interesting, because over time, it, I think it kind of shifted from people wondering why that might be necessary, to as we got more and more understanding of city center, to, I'll show you in a second, basically a vote to sell that property, or to recommend that you would sell that property. And then, on the city side, we focused, we did focus mostly on city center and its need and its impact, but we also heard from the Parks and Recreation folk who are eyeing current elementary school buildings to use as community centers. And so, there are probably, well, there are, there are multiple uses for elementary buildings that you're not using anymore, but one of the most viable ones, I think, would be some aspect of Parks and Recreation use on a full-time basis. I know that using them after school, but on a full-time basis. Next slide, please. So, we had six options that we were looking at, and this is the, this was our data keeping, it's got a description of the options, and then dollar signs, et cetera, and I realized it's too small to read, and, you know, for now, just recognize that we had six, and that's what they were ranking. I will comment, though, that most of those sixes also had an option for a new high school building. It was discussed at length, people were, Task Force members were passionate about it. There's a strong belief that, number one, 21st century education is a reality, and at the high school years, it's really critical to get that right, and our current building is a bit of a straitjacket on 21st century learning, so there was that. There's recognition that you are importing students from other districts increasingly on an annual basis, and that a new building would be attractive to that. And it was also recognized that it was expensive. So, we did have an option or two that had a brand-new high school, but every other building that, every other option that had a proposal to renovate the existing also had a sub-option to create a new high school. And the Task Force recognized that that was an issue that had a lot of prospect, but also a lot of money, and so, they were not going to make it something that they were adamant about, that it was something they were going to encourage, and it basically moves to your level of decision-making. And I think that's the right place that it should be, because ultimately, any choice of how you proceed with buildings has to be a balanced choice, has to recognize affordability, it also has to aspire to supporting learning as best it can. By the way, also as an aside, we spent probably two Task Force meetings worrying through the question of phasing. If you're going to really attend to K-12 or pre-K-12, where do you start? We even had an option that people liked until they recognized that a student entering school in kindergarten would be constantly in a renovation scheme through all twelve years of his or her education. And that option got squashed really fast when that was realized. So, care and consideration for healthy lifestyles for students while they're in school was a concern. So, that, so I would say that by the time we got to the point of ranking these options, these had been thoroughly worked through. So care and consideration for healthy lifestyles for students while they're in school was a concern. So that, so I would say that by the time we got to the point of ranking these options, these had been thoroughly worked through. We had architectural sketches for site planning. We had worked down some paths of inquiry that turned out to be very problematic, and they, we edited them out. So these were pretty thoroughly vetted by the time we got to doing the ranking. Okay, next slide, please. So there were six of them altogether. Here's the PQR schemes, and then the next slide. So this is also another blue slide, and this is the record of the meeting. These are the notes. The earlier ones were from the presentation I made, but this is the notes. This is the record of what happened in the voting. So the discussion was equity is related to two things. One is the demographics, you know, what are your socioeconomic patterns within the community? How do we make sure that a kid, no matter where they live, is going to have the same advantages, same opportunities, no matter what school they go to, how they go to school? So that was one aspect of it, but the other aspect was building condition and 21st century planning. And I'm going to show you a diagram in a minute that speaks to that, but there was concern that if we had a scheme where we had existing build, some kids going to existing buildings, which are solidly 20th-century buildings, and other kids going to a brand-new 21st-century building, and we didn't have the funds to go and improve the older building, that would be, we would be unwittingly creating a disequity. So they saw equity in terms of offering teachers and the kids the same platform for learning, no matter which building they might be in. And we did integrate the costs of doing this into our cost estimate as best we could with limited information. So that was an important part of the discussion. We, I gave out three-by-five cards. Each member was asked to identify three preferred options. One member was available only by phone. And then over a break, Annette Harton and I sorted the cards and came back with the scoring, and here it is, right off the flip chart. What happened was that option O and option Q were the most highly favored. You can see the number of votes. And what everyone recognized is that there, that these two were right at the top in terms of most favorite, and then there was a big gap before we hit any of the other ones. So that seemed to be a pretty clear message in terms of which ones they would send to you for review. For example, if one said we should send three to the school board, it's a no-brainer for the first two, and then it's a bit of a dogfight over what the third one might be. So there was immediate comfort over which ones to send to you. So that's how we got to the decision. Next, next one. Following that, we had some motions. A motion to accept the right results, eleven to O, eleven to nothing. The discussion came up of a minority opinion, and yes, that was fine to do, so that was launched. A motion made for disposing the central school site property. And what, this is one of those cases where we learned an awful lot during the course of those nineteen or so meetings. There were nuanced discussions. Is it a sale? Is it a lease? How do you structure that? How do you even structure the range of what possible future uses could be? But all of that is moved on because it's a level of depth that's beyond their scope, but they, the task force was certainly well-appraised of what's involved in that. In any event, the vote was eleven to nothing. And then there was a motion made on remodeling schools for 21st century learning, as I was just commenting on. The difficulty we have on that is that, at this point in time, we don't have a lot of technical information about the buildings to know what the costs are going to be. And it's such a nuanced discussion that the only way to know how to modify them is to do additional work with the educators and explore very thoroughly the range of educational deliveries that they're going to have, and then apply that to the building. So at this point in time, all we can do is kind of benchmark it against other schools, and we ended up, because you have bearing-wall buildings, and that complicates the issue. So the walls are solid, and they're holding up the roof. It complicates the renovation process, and it extends the renovation time, thus making it impossible to conceive of renovations that happen just over the summertime. And so that tumbles into questions of what do we do for swing space and which school goes first, and it, it's a whole project on its own. So what they chose to do is defer that issue, saying we need more information. And the idea of a feasibility study to explore that was put on the table, and that, and I would applaud that committee, because, that decision, because there's a big dollar sign attached to this, and you don't want to commit to it without knowing what it means. Next slide, please. So here's a quick diagram that shows what that means. And this is a school I've got in, in Little Town, Rhode Island, and we did this about six, seven, eight, eight years ago. And I'm, it's, it's, yes, it's buildings, but I'm going to talk about it from an educational point of view, because you, because that's the basis of how these changes happen. This is a floor plan, and this was a wing of a 1960s building. And like every other elementary school in the 1960s, it was built with solid walls, you can see them in black here, and a corridor. And more solid walls. So we had, we had eight classrooms in this diagram, no support spaces around them. That was, this was before special ed. This was before any understandings of student personalized learning. In fact, it was each teacher working alone in their own rooms, generally doing much more broadcast teaching than we want to anymore, regarding the whole group of kids in the classroom as being similar. We didn't have the nuance of different learning levels and different socioeconomic backgrounds and things like that. So there was a kind of a batching of kids within each one of these, and on isolation of each teacher within the classroom. This change, and you can see that the floor plan is, at first glance, very similar, but at second glance, you can still see the structure of the, of the walls of the original rooms. What we did in working with the, with the teachers is we created a learning space that, and this has a number of very innovative practices. The first is that the teachers who teach in this wing all teach together. They do not have separate rooms with their names assigned to them. They, as four teachers plus the specialists, have a cohort of about a hundred kids, and they are shared by all of them. The second thing about this that's unusual, this is K-2, so it's a three-year grouping of kids. The idea being that you, a student enters here at kindergarten, and they stay for three years, and in that duration, those teachers know each kid really, really well, and each year, they only lose a third of their kids. That means that the re-knowing, the getting to know kids that happens in the fall only happens for only a third of the kids here. And that improves an understanding of kids and allows the teachers to much better direct learning to each kid. Learning is directed specifically to each kid because they group and regroup kids in learning groups, small teams of kids, fostering collaboration among kids, and they position them either in these rooms or in the collaborative zone. And in the course of any kid's day, they might be moving six, eight times, and they have advantage of all of these spaces to move to coordinated by these teachers who collaborate all the time. And so instead of kids and teachers trapped in small boxes, we have a suite of learning spaces with decisions made collectively by teachers about how to best serve the individual kids, and it usually means that they're grouping and regrouping them. They're sometimes doing one-on-one tutorials, et cetera. We have a small stage. You could never get a small stage in every one of these individual classrooms. We have a soft carpeted area. We have an area for movement, and we now have the terrarium and aquarium capital of the world right in here, because that's a good part of their science program. You could never do any of that in these individual spaces, and a lot of the things we're able to do because these teachers are working together. So individualizing of instruction, personalizing learning, small groups of kids, learning to collaborate are key foundation elements for 21st century learning. Teachers collaborating, teachers sharing their passions and interests are other aspects of it. So I hope that this gives you some indication of what a 21st century learning environment might look like, whether it was a brand-new build or whether it was a possible renovation. I do have to say that I did share this with the task force. It made visible distinctions between how we used to teach and how we now teach or how we wanted to be teaching, and it probably was an instrumental factor in the long discussion we had about wanting to renovate buildings in order to make them equitable. And this is a K-12 issue, by the way, is why we, you know, much of the work is focusing on elementary. We embrace the middle school issues, and we embrace the high school issues, and so there's a lot of concern about how this building that we're sitting in right now and the high school building really do serve our kids. So long explanation, but important stuff, because this is a foundation concept. Okay, next one, please. So I put together a few slides related to school size, and this first one is operational efficiencies. The bottom line is, the fewer but larger buildings we have, the cheaper they will be to operate, because we have economies of scale that you currently don't have. And, you know, some of it's just in the simple math of the staffing that you have, and I put some of them here. There's a few others that I've missed, but we know you'll have fewer administrators, you'll have some less staff. I mean, this is a business model question, you know, what's it cost for the human resources to run a building? And, you know, the bottom line, as I say, is that larger buildings will have economies of scale that smaller buildings don't have, and so here are some of them. There's a small note here, and this one has to be proven out, but what happens in small, small elementary schools particularly, small schools but small elementary schools particularly, is that we get irregularities in the number of kids that show up each year. And so one year, you, in a small school, you might have, you know, twenty-two third graders, and the next year, you have thirty-two, and that forces another classroom for that grade level. And then it's great for the teachers, because they end up with, you know, sixteen kids in a row, but it's not great for the, for the budget. As you have, if you had a pool of 150 third graders, you're going to be more able to meet your district targets on class size than you can if you have smaller buildings. So larger buildings iron out and make more regular class size, and they control your costs in terms of serving kids well. So that's the math. When you have multiple small buildings, you generally have itinerant specialists going from building to building, OTPT, sometimes librarians, sometimes, you know, reading specialists, et cetera. Larger buildings allows you to have the specialist always in the building, and they have a better chance of knowing the kids, because they're not jumping from building to building. And building relationships is something we want to have. That's the educational side. And then you get the choice here as to whether operational savings are translated into controlling tax costs or whether you shift the money and move them into educational offerings. That's not a task force issue. It's a continuing school board policy issue. Next slide, please. Then there's educational advantages. So you can offer some enhanced programs, partly because of that cost factor I was just mentioning, but also it takes staff to organize these. And it's much harder to organize three STEM, that's science, technology, engineering, math, robotics, really good, good learning, active, hands-on learning. To organize that in three small schools is much harder to do than in two or in one. So, and, you know, music is there, art should be there. I didn't put that on there. I know there's a discussion about having world languages, and we all know that language should be taught as early as possible, you know, much more effective in kindergarten and first grade than anywhere further down the line. So greater consistency at class sizes, as I was just saying. And I think there's a greater effectiveness in serving kids who have special needs, you know, kids with IEPs, special ed kids. Smaller schools, you often have a tiny cohort of those, and you either have some inefficiencies in how you deliver it, because you need the staffing, or you have some adjustments in how you do that. So a larger pool of special ed kids is actually better, easier to manage. And this, of course, we always think of special ed kids when we think of special needs, but I think gifted kids have special needs, too. And a small school with just a few gifted kids cannot attend to them as well as a larger school with a larger cohort of gifted kids, because then you can address the staffing needs in an effective way. And there's lots of things we would love to do that we don't get to do because of costs. Next slide, please. So school structure, pre-K-4 versus sequential schools. And by the way, the P is in small there, because this is a big issue, and it's, it's a study of its own, and we recognize that we would be creating spaces for pre-kindergarten if we had some, you know, closed school buildings. But we also recognize there was an effort, a discussion, that any new builds should have pre-kindergarten in it. And so is it universal pre-K? Is it better to have a central location, et cetera? A complicated issue. I've worked with a number of districts on this issue, and it's very complicated. And so the task force could not get to recommend it, related to it, but it's a, it's a key part. So K-4, students are in the building longer. Oh, and by the way, it's a K-4 because that's what the recommendation was, and that would allow us to have the four-year middle school, thus resolving that question from a couple of years ago. Students are in the building longer, fewer transitions. It's, you know, teachers get to know kids, or actually, what they get to know is the families of those kids for a longer time, or the siblings of those kids for a longer period of time. And so there's easier transport logistics for parents if they happen to have multiple kids at elementary age. Now, I understand that that may be a, it's a temporary issue, because kids grow up and get out of school, get out of elementary school, but that's one that people feel really, really closely. If we have one K-4, we have equity. If we have two K-4s, I would even call it structural equity. If we have one K-4 in the district, then every kid is going to the same school, and we've automatically got equity. If we have two K-4s or pre-K-4s, we don't automatically have equity. We have attendance areas that we have to pay attention to. We have to look at where the boundaries are, and your boundaries are already gerrymandered. They're kind of hard to describe. But, and I, and I know that those evolve over time, but they take constant management, and demographic shift. So you're all, and nobody likes to have their attendance area changed, so it's a complicated issue. So one pre-K-4 addresses the equity issue, two pre, in a structural way, two pre-K-4s does not. You have to constantly manage it. Sequential schools, where you have, say, three grades, and then you're followed by three more grades, addresses equity in a structural manner as well, because all the kids of a certain grade go to the same school. It does allow you to have smaller schools, and it probably allows you to reuse existing buildings. So there's the equity question. There you go. Allows, and the proposal was to have continued use of Orchard. And, but one of the real advantages of this, and I don't know, this is one of those things that you probably want to research more. Educators can have a sharper focus on the developmental age of the kids. So if you have an entire building related to early educational learning and little kids who are no taller than this, you're going to have a pool of thinkers, adults, who are incredibly focused on that. And it just turns out that if you've got bigger and bigger kids, that focus isn't going to be as sharp. And people who have experienced these schools, teachers who have experienced these schools are advocates for them, but you haven't done that yet, and so I think it's important to talk to others and get to, get to some other schools. Okay, next one, please. So I pulled the best example I know of, of a large school. It's a school that I was involved in twenty, twenty-five years ago. It's in Wyndham, Maine. It's right near Portland, Maine, and it's got 900 kids in it in its K through four. So it's not, it's about the same size as yours could be if you had a single large school, and it is a sequential school. So it's got the time- So it's got the tiniest of kids, the ones we generally think of as our most vulnerable to the negative impacts of large schools. So admittedly, this is a large school. However, it operates as small schools as far as any of the kids are concerned. And that, in fact, would be the goal for any school that comes out, you know? Any new school that you do should operate as a small school. That includes your high school. We need to personalize it. We need to make it so that kids get immediately engaged. And smallness or small schools, small learning communities within the larger school is the key. So here's what we did. We created this 900-student school with three small learning communities. It says SLC there, SLC 1, 2, and 3. And each one of them is a K through 3. So it covers the full grade level. A kid starts here in kindergarten and stays there for the full four years that they're there. The teachers are there for the full four years. So, you know, that's like 275 kids. This kid in this school probably never goes over here. In fact, we have three entry doors. The bus drop-off is here. There are three ways to get into this building if you're a little kid. There's one central administrative entryway. But for all practical purposes, a student in here doesn't even know that exists. And that's the strategic concept for how this big school can operate like small schools. There are shared resources, and it's the gym, the cafeteria, music, et cetera, the things that you would expect. And so a kid will be here and then come over to here for a short portion of the day. The site plan is worked out so that the bus loop comes right across the front, the playfields are in the back, it's got good zoning for safety for kids, et cetera. So that was the basic planning concept. Now, what I did, and next slide, please, is I reached out to our superintendent, who emailed me a wonderful, a very thorough response, and that's down here. I'll highlight that in a minute. But I just want to share with you who this person is. Susan Gendron was the superintendent. She then became the main commissioner of education. So she rose to the top in Maine. She then became a policy director at the Balance Schools Consortium, and then became the president of the Council of Chief State School Officers. So she's had a pretty good career following her superintendency. Now she's the president of the International Center for Leadership in Education. One of the leading research organizations in the country, generally known as Bill Daggett's Group, out of Albany. Incredible thinkers and, what's the word I want, leaders in how we think about educational deliveries. So I asked Sue, how did it go? And here's what she sent to me. So this is exactly out of her email. You know, continues to operate as three small learning communities with great success. Each one's about 275 students. Houses provide small school environment, critical to staff knowing the children and meeting their needs. Kids remain in their houses from K through 3rd grade. They had four schools before they came, before they built this one, and she says it was an enormous task to change school culture, et cetera. Next slide, please. And then she added more thoughts. Created a sense of community in the town of Wyndham. Strong K3 teams with smooth transitions between grades. Special services were able to be maximized as teachers were not losing valuable time going between schools and stuff like that. Clear vision was established, a clear direction for the primary years versus the four different schools. And this happens in every district. Despite all the policies you have, they get carried out differently in different schools. And that ultimately becomes a fairness and equity issue as well as an effectiveness issue. Efficiencies of operations were achieved. Proximity to the middle school and high school made it possible for those older kids to volunteer in the primary school. And, you know, one of our sites that we looked at was this very site. So that's maybe a possibility. Maximize art, music, outdoor spaces, physical ed, et cetera. Careful planning of the bus and the parent drop-off. I mean, that idea that the little kid gets off the bus and marches right into their small learning community was a foundational idea. We do not have, you know, lots of kids in any single space. So her bottom line is it's truly a, retired teachers continue to come back and meet monthly. So it created a special spot in the, you know, spectrum of schools in the district. And they maintain it as a great cultural location. Next slide. Okay. So I've got a couple other here to show you. These are works in progress. They are all from Ohio, where there is, generally speaking, larger school districts, larger cities, et cetera. So I just grabbed a sampling of some recent ones. I've done visioning on these. I'm working in a couple cases with the architects. This is Buckeye Valley. It's right near Columbus. It's in the 900 range, plus or minus. There's two of these that are going to be built. One of them's got three small learning communities, and the other one's got four small learning communities. But you can see the classroom areas were designated as discrete zones with some shared teacher planning centers, and the media center is woven in them, which we can do now. A community zone for security, and then a zone with active learning, including STEM and art, et cetera. So this is a concept, and I do have to say, I don't think I've had a school district in the last 10 years that didn't want to have small learning communities because of all those relationship-building concepts and smallness concepts that come from it. Next slide, please. So here's another one. This is Talmage. This is 1,100 students. And you can see we've got K through 5 over here, and we've got pre-K through 2 over here, again, in a series of small learning communities. But what's really interesting here is that they have separate gyms, a gym for the little kids, sorry, a gym for the big kids and a gym for the little kids. They've got separate cafeterias. They've got separate entryways. They've got separate bus drop-offs. So very careful planning to make the experience for the older kids just this half of the building, the experience for the younger kids just this half of the building. There are a few on the joint, like art and music, but not a whole lot. Next one. And I think this is the last one. This is Lake. 2 to 6, 15, up to 1,500 kids. There are the five small learning communities, a separate, a possible separate entry here and a possible separate entry here for kids, a generalized entry here. This is to be worked out, you know, site restrictions, et cetera. But you can see how separate these are. Music and art and making things are in the middle, in service to them. Courtyard separates them all, and then some community use spaces. And, you know, a good building these days embraces the community and gets it in, but gets it in in a safe way with safety and security. So I think that's my last slide. Can we see if that's the last slide? Yeah, that is, because now we're into the old stuff from before. Okay, you want to just send it backwards one, John? Oh, no, go back. Oh, no, that's fine. That's a good one to leave on. So there, that's what we did. I'd be glad to cover any questions that you want me to.
Great, this is Dan. What, what in your judgment affected the desire of the city center to adopt the property at Markcott? What role did that play in the decision-making process? Let me ask it a different way. If the city had no interest in that property, would anything have changed in your judgment and the recommendations we're looking at?
If the city had no interest? Okay. I would say that the way the understanding of the task force developed was an understanding that that site could be a real asset to city center. And it could turn out that an intensive development of city center could complicate access and safety, et cetera, for the Markcott site if it continued to exist as a school site. So while no one could be absolutely definitive that the Markcott site was absolutely necessary for city center, I think there was a general belief in that it could be very supportive. And it would expand the acreage of city center development by a good, I think it was 11 acres there, by a good amount. So I don't think it was so much that the city was saying, we want this. It was that in discussion, it was recognized that it could be a good asset to carrying out the city center concept. Did I answer your question?
Well, it's danced around it, in my opinion, but I'm really trying to understand whether we, as a school board, would be facing the same options if there were no considerations on the city side versus what we're doing. Because, and this is not to say that we shouldn't try to find some synergies in between the two, it's only to try to parse the driving forces that are getting us to this point.
Well, clearly, the concept of city center was provocative of the study. It's the urban, that and the airport.
Certainly accelerated our visioning process.
Right, I mean, it's coming your way. And so therefore the planning.
But would it be the best educational option for kids, you know, if it were not there?
Yeah, that's probably a better way to ask.
If what was not there?
If the issue of city center were not there, would selling the Markcott property be the best educational way to go for the kids of the community?
Okay. If city cen, so the question is, if city center was not there?
Right.
We might not even have done the study.
No, I don't think that's true because I think you were talking about consolidation of schools, and I think the district has been talking about that for years.
Okay. All right. Well, so city center was one of the provocateurs of it.
That's right.
Yes, right. Okay. Would we have come to the same vote, perhaps, if it weren't for the pressures of city center? So my answer is just basically a judgment based on what I observed.
Sure.
And I think that the discussion about equity and 21st century learning, those discussions about those other aspects of how the decision was made, and that would include equity, it would include 21st century learning, were abundant, lengthy discussions. And so I think it very well could be that a decision would be made to consolidate schools and to, in fact, want to renovate them to 21st century standards. Yes, I really do believe that. And so let me take your question and add a corollary to it, you know? If we only had the pressures of the airport, you know, what might have been the conclusion? And so I could see that there would have been a strong, long discussion, a deep discussion about how we best serve those kids and all kids in general. There would have been work to see how re, how changing the attendance areas might have allowed the kids from Chamberlain to go to, I suppose they might go just to Central, and then that might either make Central get much larger if it could fit on the site, or bump kids over to Orchard. So I don't know how that math would have worked out. But given the values of the educators, I'll bet that just the airport alone would have provoked the same discussion. I really do. And then, you know, the devil's in the details, how big are the sites, how big? And we looked at, I'll tell you, we looked at a lot of additions to existing buildings that you don't even want to see because they weren't pretty. Those sites are relatively small, and they don't take additions very easily. Oh, I answered your question?
Sure.
As best as it can be answered, perhaps.
It's hypothetical enough that maybe it doesn't really have an answer. But I think Julie's question that we're trying to wrestle with is, is the right answer for the education of children? That's the first thing I think we'd like to know the answer to. And then the second thing is, okay, what options do we have to get there? Perhaps in a staged and stepped way, but, you know, what options do we have to get to that point? And what are the obstacles in getting there? And for example, one of the things we understand from the task force is that if we did decide to go to a single elementary school, we don't know where we'd put it because we don't have a site big enough to put it on, other than perhaps the Markcott property, okay?
Yeah. It's not easy. We looked at sites for a single elementary school, including the back of the high school site. And some of them are great sites with easements and things on them. So it's a separate study on its own to look at your existing stock or the city existing stock to really know what's manageable. As I say, it's a study of its own. The Markcott site as a site for a single elementary school, I don't even think was discussed at all. I know we didn't look at it.
Well, that gets to the question of what would happen if the city weren't interested in that possibility for that property?
Yeah. So the difficulty with the Markcott site is that it's sandwiched between a very busy road, which, well, which is basically a barrier for access. You certainly aren't going to walk to school and cross the road, too. So it's between a very busy road that has strip characteristics to it and what, as best I understand by watching the video, a pretty dense and tall, you know, four-story high, maybe five-story high development, which is going to have a lot of traffic, testimony to parking garages. You don't put parking garages in if you don't have a lot of traffic. So either one of those sides is bookends to a school site. It may be the perfect site in the world for a school from a geographic location or because of the fact that you own it already. But I think it needs real thought and more understanding on the traffic issues and safety issues and congestion issues, which you, you know, Doris, you know, Doris Street's got its own congestion story right now. So.
Patrick, did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got two. The, can you, I'm not sure this is easy to answer either, but how would you weight the different educational value of quote-unquote 21st century learning at the elementary level compared to the high school level?
I think it's just as important. I think in terms of facilities, it may look easier because it doesn't necessarily have all the accoutrements, like, you know, you don't necessarily have to have a great STEM lab, for example. But it's easy in terms of facilities to jump to those signature spaces and say, this is what we need. I think what characterizes the 21st century learning is more the educational deliveries, what kids are doing, what teachers are doing. Project-based learning is pervasive across K through 12. And that approach to teaching and learning has students involved in, you know, research, has them involved in real-world connections, has them involved in making judgment calls, all the things that adults have to do, and has them involved in situations where there are no single answers. It's learning that contributes to deeper thinking skills, problem-solving skills. And that is just as important, whether you're a first grader or whether you're an 11th grader. By the time you get to 11th grade, having a STEM lab and a great art lab where you can, in fact, explore English through art are, you know, very good parts of 21st century learning and more iconic than you might have in an elementary school. So I think it's important across the way. And I don't think you could say, oh, we'll start 21st century learning when the kids get to, you know, 8th grade or 7th grade, et cetera. It's foundational.
Okay. And the other question I have for you, we started some of your talk with us tonight about the complexity of some of the issues and how you did some community engagement, but we didn't go very far because we knew how complex it was, and you can't just have a two-hour meeting. How have you facilitated or seen people effectively get to that next stage? Or have you seen, how do we engage the community here with these complex issues to drive to community? to drive to community, community engagement and buy into whatever that game is?
Yeah, okay. I mean, to, to be honest about your situation, it is very complicated and nuanced. And I think the task force, I mean, kudos to the task force for their willingness to try to sort it out. The, the, the package that they sent to you, you know, the report, was, I think, the best possible place that they could end up and, and get it to you. But I, but I think that there's more work to do and you should not believe that you could simply receive the report and go make some decisions. I, I think that, that what they've done is they have done a really, really good job of addressing the issues, making them visible. And they've got some recommendations for you to follow up on. But I don't think you should take those recommendations at face value. You've got to do some more exploration and, and I, I would call it, what, what I would recommend is that you, at the board level, take on the task of working through a strategic plan. And, and I think, and I've got a number of steps here, I'll, I'll line them in a second. What this would do would be to, it would be quick learning for you to know the nuance of these issues and some of the, you know, the downsides, the plus sides and the trade-offs. One is, I, I think that a delegation should visit the school I cited in Maine. It's been operating long enough. You know, I got an email from the superintendent last week, so we still have access to early thinking on that and, and so we can get a long-term perspective on, on how that worked in that community. I, I also have, there's a school in Ohio outside of Columbus that if you want to buy an airplane ticket, is really worth visiting. Eleven hundred student school covering grades first through eight with, it's, it's kind of the, the buzz now, it's a big school, but they've done a number of things really, really right. And so I would encourage that as another visitation. I think that you should, in that strategic plan is to listen to the educators, your educators, and perhaps have a two-hour work session with them and hear directly from them as to what they think is important for teaching and learning for, for your kids in your district. And there's no other group of people who know where you've been, what your values are, and they, they, they have a good sense of the future. So, I, I think listening to them directly rather than reading bits and pieces in a report would, would be important to do. There were costs in this document, so projection of costs was the best we could do at the time. And one of the biggest variables was whether we renovate schools for 21st century learning, you know, whether we really make that bold step that was in the diagram up there. That's a wild card right now. And so I think part of a strategic plan would be that if, 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 if you believe that maintaining existing buildings is viable, that would be the two elementary school option, for example, and, and then of course there's the high school issue, that a sidebar study to try to nail costs a bit more specifically would be really important. And, and I, I mean, I wish I could just say, "Yeah, go for it and do 21st century learning." It's, the model that I showed you was, was facilitated by the fact that the building had columns and was, it covered it in a lot of ways. But there may be other ways to get most of 21st century learning without anywhere near the expense in your case. And so I don't think it's black or white on that one. So, that's further study. So, another one would be, have another community forum, but we went round and round in trying to, try, try to, to, to create that forum. And the, the, the tough issue always is, do we load people up with data and can they understand it quickly and make a decision? Or do we, do we back off on explanation in the data and be very, very general? And I think that we, we, I know, we were very general and, and we didn't have really hard options. So, if you were to do the visits, run the cost through, listen to the educators and formulate the choices in a, you know, don't forget when we went to the community, we still had all these choices, now we're, now we're maybe down to much fewer. And get those much more specific and be really clear on what the advantages are and the disadvantages. What, people default to what they know. And so if you've got some concepts that are very different in terms of what school would be like, you need to give breathing room to what that means in order for people to really, really respond to it. Otherwise you get a, you know, you generally get a reaction, "There's too much information, I don't, I don't want to go there." So, I, I would, and, and the question we had about the community forum was that, you know, if you have 200 people come out, that sounds really great, but there's 200 people representative of the whole district. And I, I think that as part of the strategic plan with getting information out in advance and not having the community forum be, you know, absolutely all new information, a second community forum could be regarded as bringing really good understanding as advisory. And there was talk of a survey. The problem with surveys, in my opinion, is that it's very hard to get the nuances and the depth of understanding in it. So, the way, i- if one were to be done, I, I think it's going to require really, really careful understanding of what appropriate questions are. And, and I, and I think it's a big challenge to do that. Tied in with all of this is the pre-K question, which is somewhat of a sidebar issue and, and maybe gets settled if you vacate some existing buildings and we have places to put it. But it's, given that pre-K is offered by a number of private operators, given that pre-K is probably the most important grouping of years that we have, research shows that, it, I think, would be good in your strategic plan to embrace that question much more than we've been able to do in the past. And having fewer options to choose from will make it clearer how pre-K can be accounted for. When we had 15 options, it was, it was too complicated to, to, to engage. So, those six items, I think, can be managed in a coordinated way. It'll take months to sort it out, but it's, it would lead you to being able to make a very well-informed decision that, that this is really good work, but it's, I think you need to take more and do more work to, to fully understand it.
Any questions?
Frank, really quickly, the, is there kind of an optimal number of grades at a minimum that you would recommend or that your experience has, has recommended that in terms of developing relationships with a group of educators, that's most optimal for kids? And, and then conversely, is there a number of grades that are too many in one facility or in one grouping, one learning community such that you aren't building resiliency or, or the ability to network or form new relationships, for instance? Is there, is there kind of a minimum and a, and a maximum on that?
You're asking in a school building or in a small learning community?
In a small learning community.
Ah, okay.
Well, may, maybe both, actually.
Yeah.
You, I mean, you keep referring, you kept referring in this with three grades at a time.
Yeah.
Three to four at a time.
Yeah. I do not know of any precise research, any scientific research that, that will tell you a number. However, my, my number would be three is a minimum. Because otherwise, if you only have a two, two years in a school building, the kid gets there the first year and, and then it takes them a quarter to a half a year to get comfortable to figure out, you know, it takes until November for the teachers to even register an impression of the student. So, there's a lot of learning happening. And so the, the first year is the first year into the school and the second year is getting ready to get out of school. And, and so there's lots of discontinuities. Three years, you at least get one solid year in the middle before the break. Now, is that a scientific answer? No. It's a gut feel answer. The, you know, a, a school with, you know, a K-four would be five years and a K-five would be six years. Is there much of a difference between those two? I, I don't think so.
Mm-hmm.
On a school itself, is there any detriment for even going beyond that? Well, there's a major, there has been a major movement, particularly in urban schools, to go to K-eights, which is in good part to be, to build those long relationships and to embrace families. And in urban situations, it's often very difficult to get families engaged, so you grab them and you hold onto them. And that's a good thing. In terms of a small learning community, what educators know is that if you had a small learning community, like the one right behind you there, and it was a multi-grade small learning community, or the one in Wyndham where it's a K through three, then the teachers know the students for a longer period of time. What, the, the, the factor that's fighting against that is that the Common Core is organized on a grade-level basis now and educators are quickly defaulting to the notion of, "Oh, we must have all of our third-grade teachers together." But the strategic question is, how many third-grade teachers do you need together to have a think tank that they can support each other, et cetera? And I know the answer is not all of them. It's, it's a, a couple of them. And the other question is, how do you size the small learning community so that you can maintain your desired district student-teacher ratio? And so there's a bit of a math puzzle tucked into all of that. But I do think that the question about how big the think tank should be of teachers in the same grade is part of the puzzle. I think that the, the question of how we assign kids to the small learning communities when they enter is part of the puzzle. And I think you assign them to mix socioeconomics, not to reinforce the socioeconomics that you have. And so you would be, this would not be done by, just, you know, cold assignments or alphabetical. It's going to be done by a group of people who are really thinking this through. So, that's a very long answer and I don't know that I hit it right. But I do think that the larger cohort of kids and the recognition of how big of a pool you need to have critical thinkers of teachers is a good part of the puzzle.
Thanks. Any other board questions? We're getting kind of late in our agenda.
Yes.
Just a quick recap of where the board is at. We, we have engaged a real estate.
Investment advisor.
Advisor, I think that's the name, to really help us through the analytical side. We've got four scenarios at a minimum, I think, that are being developed, including status quo. And we'll certainly take under advisement some of the recommendations made this evening. I know some, there are some community members that I'm sure are interested in this discussion. I don't want to get too far off our agenda, but why don't I open it up for a couple of minutes if there are any questions from the community for Frank? Yes, sir.
Not so much questions, just some brief comments. I'll try to keep them brief. I have no PowerPoint to read, so we'll go quick. Yeah, sure, Dan Albrecht, we live on Proctor Avenue, daughter in 11th grade, daughter in 8th grade. I'm also a land use planner, works for the County Planning Commission, also including helping out here in the, on assignment in the office, at the planning office. I guess, just to keep it brief, haven't been able to participate in some of the events and all that have been helped, but I've read some of the reports. I guess two things, just thematic is, I don't see a crisis here. We have good schools. We have a robust economy, both professionally and personally. I, I see continued growth in this community and all. I know because I help review these applications for subdivisions here and apartments here. And I guess I look at a little bit in terms of also as, about land use planning and, and keeping community, you know, we're out there going, "Hey, kids, walking back to school." And now we're thinking of busing all the kids around to one school. As an incremental measure, going from three elementary schools to one seems pretty dramatic. Going from three to two may be, and I know this, it's a hard nut to crack with all the property issues and the airport and all that, so I won't get into that. As someone who, as a land use planner, as someone who's worked in public policy for 20 years, we need more community input on this, you really do. A lot more. You see it now, now that the word got out and then the, whether it was, you know, even just some of the memos you guys have put out and that gets in the paper and then all of a sudden you see a flurry of letters and that tells you something, which I think you guys know. And then last, this is the larger issue of state funding, which is the real driver. You know, we can do the best we can, we can grow our economy and we're still sending money out to the rest of the state. We're stuck with Act 64. We're still stuck with tuitioning, we're still stuck with the travesty of taxpayer money going outside of the country, outside of the state and to elite private schools that none of us can afford. So, we're, we're, and, and that whole economic issue is still coming down the track because we're, we're not just in our own school budget here with our city doing what we want to do. We're all part of the whole state system, which is under tremendous financial pressure. So, I just, when I look at all those measures, how little control we had, I think, I just seem like go slow and measure and be sure you get the, plenty of community input. It won't affect me as much, you know, my kids will be out of here in a couple of years and all that and, and all, but people have bought homes in areas, people are building subdivisions and apartments based upon certain, the way that our community is. And that caused a lot of disruption. They said, "Oh, we're all just going to go to one big school and so on and so forth." So, that's about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Other comments?
Amy Williamson, I have two daughters at Rick Marquette. I know you spoke about the positives of Wyndham Primary School, but can you share any of the cons? I know she had sent you a list of pros, but I'd like to know what she found, what the challenges were.
Yeah, what she sent me was unguided by, by my email to her. I just simply said, "Tell me how it, you know, how it, how it went."
So, we don't have any information on some of the challenges of a large school? We just have ways that it's positive. I'm just looking for more information on what they have found to be the challenges of...
Okay. I don't, I don't have a specific answer on that. I, I shared with you the entire body of her email and the manner that I received it.
Okay, and you don't have any other information on the challenges that these large schools you have helped build? There's no information on that, on the negatives of them? In other words, these schools can't, it can't only be positives, there have to be challenges these schools have faced. Is there no information on that?
I don't have information I can share right now.
Okay.
I mean, because it's not the, on the Wyndham one, which is the one I'm closest to, I, I know her well enough that if there was something that was driving, you know, some, some big issue, some problem, that she would have sent it to me and I would have shared it with you. That's as straightforward as I can be on it. I, I do think that, you know, if you do look at research on school size, you'll find lots of negative things. But that, but what's, what's never clear and one can only assume is that those are organized in a traditional may, in, in a traditional manner, often, you know, older in urban situations with more challenging demographics and socioeconomics. with more challenging demographics and socioeconomics. And I know that if the Wyndham school had been organized as a single large school with no thought at all as to how to make it feel small for kids, and how to build relationships between kids and teachers, I would not be here advocating it. I would, I would, you know, it would not be something that I would recommend that you look at. But I did recommend that as part of a strategic plan, people learn more about it. And the best way to do it is actually talk directly to the people who are running it. And they've been running it for 20 years now.
Yeah, one more thing about Wyndham. I know it's K through three. Where are the fourth and fifth graders placed?
There is an upper elementary school on, it's probably about four miles away, I would guess.
So they're just, it's just those two grades? They're not with seventh, sixth or? Do you know they're?
Four and five are together, four, five, six, seven, eight. That, that site that the primary school is on has a high school, a middle school, and the primary school. And then the one school that's off-site is about four miles away. And it's the upper elementary site. And she was commenting on how good it was to have the high school kids coming to the, the primary school. And so the only one that they didn't capture was the upper elementary, just circumstance of property management.
Thank you.
Any last question?
I have just, a few quick comments. It is late, and I don't want to derail your agenda, so. One, I think it's a telling thing that Mr. Locker informed us that one of the motivations behind the task force was the city's, you know, very interest in, in selling the Markon property. But however, when we went to the community meeting in March, we were told that we were not allowed to consider that whatsoever. The meeting was not about that, and that's not why we were there. Okay? I remember that distinctly being told when we broke into groups. Note, that has no bearing on this whatsoever. The next point is that I don't know a lot about 21st century learning, but I'll tell you what I do want. I want 21st century teachers. And I don't want to have to worry about 21st century taxation when you put a capital expense on top of the teacher cost, which are going up, as well as the, as the cost per pupil. As we saw in our education financing, education course that we had last week, right? The tax rate is wholly dependent upon the cost per normalized pupil. And that's what we have to control. And if you have to throw capital costs on top of that, you are going to spiral the cost of living in South Buon and totally out of control. I've already heard that the city council is proposing a 3% tax increase on the city's side. It started at 3.8% at the first meeting I went to. So if they're at 3%, I don't know what the, you know, the school budget's going to be. But you have a declining enrollment, and now you're talking about building a new school. You have three schools, you could easily reduce to two schools. I think we need to start thinking in a more common sense way, how to deploy our rooms in our schools, our teachers, so that our children have the best, most cost-effective outcomes. Thank you.
I need time for my, sorry. Well, if you could go back to one of the drawings while Frank is here, I'd love for him to talk about equity. This, like the first.
I got this.
Oh, you already have it. Never mind. But in, in one of the buildings that you showed, I think it was the 901, it had the common areas in the back and then the three small learning up in the front. And you commented how the kids in this pretty much are there, and they don't even know this other one exists, right? So two things in terms of equity that I have heard, I heard in the task force, and then I've heard other people talk about, ask about. The two things that popped were, people in the task force would say, we'd love to see all the kids together, you know, one big community altogether. What, how, in your, in your experience, how has that, everyone being together in one place, how does that fit when one kid doesn't even know there's a, no, doesn't even know there's another wing? When, when would that, you know, oh, let's get all the kids together, when does that experience happen in a building like that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I, I use that expression, that a kid in house one wouldn't know about house three. It's, it's hyperbole. I'm sure they know that it's there, they just don't go there often. In the same way that a kid who goes to Chamberlain right now doesn't really know that orchard's over there. That building has, has a cafeteria and a gym, and those are the two common big assembly spaces. And it's actually got a stage between the two of them, which can open to either side. So if you wanted to have every kid in a big assembly in an event, you would, could use the gym side, either with the stage or without the stage, the cafeteria's a little kinder and friendlier.
And they'll hold a space with 900.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they'll, that'll, that'll hold the whole student body if, if they want to do that. But I, I think your question is, is a good one, and would be one of those things that could easily be directed to the, to the school operators right now. And, you know, my general rule is that no matter how you plan a building, there's always some downside to it. And you want to look at school operations as a way of balancing what might be negative. And if, here's a classic example. You have a high school that's organized into three small learning communities or four. If you send all those kids to lunch by small learning community, they'll never get to know each other. So you want to mix the lunch schedule so that kids can get to know others from the rest of the building and be with their friends and things like that. I don't know that that's so important for a primary school, but I know it's very important for a high school. So I'm, so I think there's strategies for that.
And then the other piece on equity is that equity, if you have everybody in one place, and you have these three individual learning centers, whatever, there is, how, how can you, if the buildings are all identical, in your experience, how can you also ensure the equity of the actual teachers is the same? I mean, one teacher is going to be so different. I think it's, is it not a stretch to say that equity is automatic, which is what you said? There may just be a great group of teachers in that one, and a couple of new ones, and someone who's retiring, and they're kind of done teaching in another. And I mean, that's, that's nature, talk to this, you know? So it, how would you?
Right. Actually, I said structural, I didn't say automatic.
Okay.
What we know is that when you have separate buildings and separate principals, they are, they do end up operating slightly differently from each other, sometimes substantially differently, depending upon what the district policy is, whether it's site-based management or whether it's more central. A single building, the building I showed you, or any building of three, of 900 kids, I would assume would have one principal and then several assistant principals. So the overall leadership is in the hands of, of a single person, a team of people, but a leader. That is going to assure much more consistency in teachers' daily deliveries, et cetera, because of just the nature of leadership. So that, that would be the first step. The second step is that question of carrying it down to the level of the individual classrooms. And, and also then the question as to whether teachers are working absolutely alone, is the traditional mode, or whether they're on teacher teams. And the teacher teams generally bring with them the ability for teachers to do peer review and know each other's work, to share their passions and loads, et cetera. So there's a, the model, and I'll call it a 21st century model, has much more collaboration and, in a sense, exposure of teachers to each other's work. And I think it's a, it's a much better, build it up by, by the bootstraps model. A lot of that can be done in traditional buildings. However, the structural part is the centrality of the leadership.
All right. We're going to move on with our agenda.
Yes.
Thank you, Frank, very much. I know the board was particularly interested in hearing from you, and we appreciate you taking all this time with us.
Thanks for asking me to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to Agenda 10, administrative reports.
So let me, I'll do just a quick time check. I think, you know, I definitely want to make sure we get to this, the stewardship and the compensation and benefits. The organizational structure, I think, can be very quick for you. And I, so I think, given where we are, we're, I think we're doing okay, Elizabeth.
Okay.
I know we're running a little bit late, though. So in your packet is your, the long-term facility stewardship plan. This is an important piece to us at this point in time. And John actually has some information that we're going to share with you in a PowerPoint. And so you'll have to reposition yourself, Elizabeth. But again, looking at kind of where we are with budget, where we are with facilities, where we are with master planning, and making some decisions regarding that. So John, you're on. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you. I know with all the discussions of consolidation, et cetera, this, this topic is really important because we have schools to take care of. And we've had a stewardship plan for the last seven, eight years that's been driven by doing projects when they absolutely need to be done, and mostly funding them through the operating budget. But with cost containment at the state level, and the way that debt service is excluded from that cost containment, in other words, debt service will never be double taxed, it makes it important to look at this, how our funding for stewardship should be changed a little bit. And so that's what I, I put the three-page summary together. If you have that, just make sure you turn to the page three that has the detailed schedule of what, what we'd like to do in the next three years, because it's very small on the screen. So the first thing I do want to look at is what we've done in the last year. The voters approved reuse of a bond issue that was, a repurposing of a bond issue that was issued back in 2005, for a project that failed because there wasn't enough corresponding state funds to do what was going to be done then, which was build an administrative office. We kept that money in abeyance for 10 years, using the interest to pay off debt service, so it didn't affect taxpayers. But in March of 14, we went to the voters and asked for permission to use it for certain projects. So I want to update you first on that. There were, let's see, I can get this big, sorry. We identified, I think, six things that we wanted to do with the money. And I'll be brief with this. We had the art wing roof, which is the southernmost roof of the high school, which was original. And we replaced that with a standing seam roof. And then Chamberlain School roof, we replaced that, too. All these, these schools have various, if I say roof, there's six or seven sections. The high school probably has 12 sections. So it's a portion of the roof at Chamberlain. And the next thing is, we had ADA studies to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Acts of 2010. And we got guidance on that in 2012 after it came out from the federal government. And we realized that, first of all, we had a problem getting kids up to the second floor of middle school. And so we, we built an elevator. And that's the, that's the final tally on that. We also, I'm sorry, I went too fast. Our window project at the high school, the windows are original equipment. We got $150,000 to go as far as we could. When we went through the testing phase, which you do, you get RFPs, testing phase to see what's in there, we found there were PCBs in the glaze around the windows. So we had to take a step back and say, what's the danger for kids? What's the danger on the inside of the building? And we took the summer, rather than of 14, to figure all that out, and then come up with a plan to get some of it done in 15. So that's what we did. There's a, on the front page of the website, there's still the PCB reports if you, if you care to go there, but that's, and so that was the first, that was the first phase. And then we need to upgrade our restrooms in the high school. First of all, their original equipment. And, original equipment, you know, original plumbing spaces, that kind of thing, not ADA compliant at all. So we got, we, we got one bathroom done that's ADA accessible with the funding we had. And there's structural, like Frank was saying, there's structural things that had to be done, and it's adjoining another restroom that we're going to do next summer if we get the funding. And then finally, the elevator. Frank said a lot of things that I've, I'm going to say today that you can't get, you cannot remodel a school in two months. Takes a lot of planning. I'm very proud that we didn't lose any days, because we did some major work this last summer. But when we looked at the elevator project in, in the high school, it had to be right in the center where it is now, but it has to be almost double the size, according to this city standards. There's abatement of asbestos preliminary, or primarily. And then there's five levels. And kids who need the access would have to go up four stairs worth of the level just to get up to, from the cafeteria to the front lobby. So in order to do this in two summers, we built a ramp through one of the classrooms, and I'll show you a picture in a minute. And got some more funds, we transferred a little bit from the restrooms, and some more funding in the 15, in the 16 budget to get this done. So all that's left in this project is to build the elevator this summer. And the elevator is, it's, all the bids are in and that kind of thing, so we just have to be faithful to get those done on time. So what this looks like is, this is the middle school elevator, and it's operational. And the next, that's the outside look, so it blends in. That was done successfully. The windows on the west wing, south side, when you, you come to the high school, you see the windows are, are finished there. So we got 10 classrooms done, and we have about 40 to do, so we're, we've started. The next is the, the, this is a ramp, it's a wheelchair accessible ramp from the main lobby into the cafeteria. And this used to be a, kind of a wild space. It had been the library, the art room, a special ed room, enrichment center. And then the big picture was housed there, and huge classroom. And there were asbestos problems and ventilation problems, so we took care of all that this summer. Finally, the other projects were the, this is what the art room roof looks like now. And we don't just necessarily do the highest cost roof. We look at each one. The Chamberlain roof, we're able to apply a coating that makes, extends the roof for 10 years. So that's as opposed to a built-up roof that we put on the art wing. So that's briefly what's happened last year. So the main challenge, the main challenge is getting the elevator done this summer. Now, the next thing, whoop, this is the current elevator, you've probably all seen it, and it'll come out to here and over there, and it, it'll just be quite a lot bigger than it, it is now. Now, this is why, if you have your hard copy in front of you, we've worked really hard with the administrators and the director of facilities to update our stewardship plan to be all-inclusive of as much information on here that we can, and identify needs that, that are, face us right now. And that, I just want to let you know that she's helping, in my office, set up a third-party program, a database, so we can track these and you get all kind of information from, from the system, rather than just a spreadsheet from me. So this will have life as life goes on. And there aren't a whole lot of new things on here, but they're, they're spaced out a little bit, because if you look at the first line, fiscal '17, the total project cost is $1,372,000. And for now, we put a 20% soft cost on top of that for architects, engineers, legal, that kind of thing. As we, as we vet this in the next month, this, this number can be whittled a little bit. But you can only, you only really have two months to do work. So we split the project So we split the projects into what we can do in the summer of '17, summer of '18, and summer of '19. Two, there are three areas I think are very, that I consider the most important. One is the restroom upgrades for ADA compliance. There are three main restrooms left to do, and that's why there's, that $180,000 is carried over across. The window replacements, we have identified sections of the building where we would do that, and that's a different amount because there's different windows in each room. And then finally, the real part of this is Munson Field upgrade. There's two parts to this. One is the turf needs to be replaced. It was put in in 2004. It was, it's the only turf left that Progress put in in that year. So, and I can walk you out, there was one section that was put in five years later. You can tell why it's worn out. But that's part of it. And the second part is the track around, this is, this is inherent more, more than I had it before because of the, before we were going to try to put another layer of asphalt on there. But it really needs to be more of an all-weather type of track. So that was never shown, it was always shown separately, but that's combined in here. So if you notice, I don't, I really won't get into much of the details yet on these, but the total cost of doing these projects is $5,620,000 over the three years. The next thing I want to show you is our current debt, our annual payments. Our debt service, as you see here, in 2016 was $637,000. So that's the debt that's the annual payments. It's not the total debt, but it's the annual payments that are due this year. We actually paid off the bond that funded the Chamberlain and Orchard remodeling back in '95, '96. We just paid it off November 1st, so they're free and clear. We have about $120,000 left on Chamberlain. And then the rest of the debt, as you see, going out in 2018, '19, '20, goes out to 2025. That's the elevators and the bathrooms we just did. So what we were looking at, and just want to get it out there, that we're looking at reviewing these projects with the school board and the citizens' budget group in December. There's questions, we have write-ups on each project, we have pictures, but we need to get that out there to see, hey, do you really need that? Now, I welcome that question because we've talked and talked in what goes in here, what doesn't go here. One big thing is bathrooms at the field. There's no bathrooms in the athletic field. We've made do with porta-johns and that kind of thing, but that's in the third year. And then, then, so with the budget, we'd look for having an approval of a bond resolution the same day we approve the budget so that it can be properly warned and go to the voters. And the way the projects are right now, we'd ask for voter approval on March 1st for a 20-year bond of $5.6 million. Now, if approved, the bond wouldn't all be issued at one time. It could be issued in three tranches or parts. So in FY '17, the projects we have listed, a total of $1,646,000, and that's what we would borrow at that time. In 2018, it would be $1.9 million, and 2019, $2,053,000. We're working with the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. We're really blessing Vermont because they take all the, well, cities can do it on their own, but it'd be pretty, it's not wise. Because the bond bank does all this work and combines our debt with all the debt of the other cities and towns in the state. So the bond bank has provided us with these estimates. And interest rates are going up. And people hear that, but it looks like they really are, and they've built that into the third year. So I just want to show you the, if the total bond issue was issued, it doubles, sorry about that. If all these projects were funded, we'd have debt service now of $639,000. In 2020, our debt service would be $637,000. If we only funded one year, the first year, there would be this little increment. And you don't make any principal payment until the second year of a debt issue. So it's just interest here, and then it would grow there. Same with the green and the purple. So in a world where to plan, it'd be great to have all three years funded, but that might not be practical, a $5 million bond, I don't know. But I do think that this is the best way to fund these projects right now. What happens is, in 2017, when we're building the budget, this $639,000 that we're paying in this year is held harmless in the 2017 budget so that if double taxed, if we're over the limit for the double tax, it becomes a credit, so we're back under the limit. This is not counted as part of that double tax. What happens though, because our debt, it's a great thing our debt's paid off, you know, our schools are paid off. That's, we're pretty happy about that. But next year, our credit with this Cost Containment Act 46 will only be 351,000 or less than that, 337,000 if that doesn't get in there. So it's, it's, it makes it pretty unwise to do capital through your operating budget because we'd be penalized severely. It makes more sense to do it through a bond issue. Now, we've done, I look around here, the lights and the ceiling, we replaced those last summer in the '14. And it was done through the operating budget, and it wasn't very expensive, that kind of thing. We'd still have to figure out how to get it done, but it's just a different way of looking at things. So before, I'm going to show you just a couple of details of the projects that are listed. But does anybody have any questions right now?
Just a couple of quick ones, John. When you say debt, you haven't included the state debt that we're talking about in terms of revenue reduction, correct?
No, because that's a-
I mean, debt payback.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, you may know this, we got some better news from Orchard, but it's not great. We, if Orchard was sold, we'd owe $1.2 million back for Orchard. That was a number we were missing. So it's about $6 million if the schools were reused for something else.
But that's not counted in here because it's, this is-
No, this is short, the one-year budget we're looking at.
And I assume that any of these items could be adjusted for any recommendations that might come out of our discussions around master planning?
They could, I could. One thing we did on purpose was, in the first year, there's only one project at any elementary school, and that's the Orchard driveway. It just needs to be done. And Justin, who was here, he's put in his plan, we'd pay the city to do that. So that's the only project in fiscal '17. There are roofs, though, at the other schools that have to be looked at and repaired.
Well, we did, we had a, we've had a conscious conversation around kind of strategic-
Yeah.
But yet not high-risk, you know, related issues of reorganizing. So again, I mean, that may get, you know, we're going to continue to reevaluate that. But again, a lot of the decisions, a lot of what you've seen tonight around whether it's athletics or facilities or work on the elementary, we've really tried to go through it and pay attention to making sure there's appropriate learning spaces and cared for, but also with an eye on some appropriate decision-making opportunities in the near future based on where we're headed.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So just, just to give a little bit of idea where we're going. The turf field, that's just a, it's kind of a symptom of it being worn out. I mean, you can go there, and it's, the grass is like a putting green instead of a grown-up fairway.
And you get, I mean, it's kind of like a rug that's fraying, you know, those types of things. I mean, there's just breakdown in material, breakdown in the stitching, you know, it's all that that starts happening. It still looks good, I think, I mean, from afar, but when you get down there and examine that, as John said, it's, and progress is obviously, you know, been really helpful on helping us to repair it, but they also give us authentic feedback, you know?
And one other thing, this is just peculiar to the field turf. You can actually lease this? The University of Vermont fields are lease purchased through government municipal lease.
Like for the, for the life of the field? Like, that's weird.
No, they, you can only do it for five years, and the life is more like 10 to 12.
Oh, really?
But I think that needs a weigh-in from the voters. I mean, it's, my political, I don't do that much, but I think it needs a weigh-in by the voters because it's a significant, ongoing expense. It was a great donation at the beginning.
John, are there lifetime guidelines for how long a project has to live, to be viable, before having to be redone to make it eligible for bonds?
Yes.
And do all these, are all these projects meet whatever those criteria is?
They are. You can average them out. So our windows in our bathrooms have a 30-year life, and we went through the process there. The turf field probably has a 12-year life, but we did that as a 10.
Dollar weight the averages?
Dollar weight the averages. So it comes out, these projects, as a three-year total, come out to about a 21-year life. So that's a real odd number for a bond. So we rounded that to 20. But it's not, you don't have to have a separate bond for the five-year lives, 10-year lives, that kind of thing.
And so to some extent, the ability to bond this depends upon the mix of approved projects.
That's right. The length of time, yes, and-
So, I mean, so we need to be sensitive to understanding which ones are long-lived. Taking the short-life one out's not a problem. Taking the long-life one out's a problem.
Right, right. And we have that data, we can do that in a minute. This floor at the middle school, middle school is taken care of tremendously. I mean, you look at this school, I love coming in here. So, it's just enough commentary there, but this floor doesn't look bad. But these are, these tiles have asbestos. And if you walk in there, you'll see where they, every time one of them pops up, we're trained to deal with the asbestos and put it away properly or call somebody in, like this one section here that's darker, over a break and take care of it. So that floor needs to be replaced. It's just, it's got a high priority. And another high priority is the high school gym. The ceiling tile are, if you look at most gyms, they've been taken out already. The ceiling's dropped here, and they're not, they're a safety hazard, so.
Suspended tile like these, and you have something that touches them, hits them, it tips them, and you have potential high-risk unfalls.
So you'll see this again. I don't, I don't think I need to go through all of them, the pictures, but we've gathered information. We'll put it together with the write-up, keep you informed a little more. And then the citizen budget group, we're, I mean, in the process of forming. And usually, people who attend the board meetings the most, some years it's hard to get people to be interested in the budget. I don't think it'll be here that hard this time. So we'll have meetings in December and in January. And everybody's laughing out there, so.
Take some names, John, take some-
Oh, I have, I have names. I have those three names there. So I lost my train of thought, trying to be funny. That's not-
So, John, on bond, I mean, one of, this is one area that's majorly in front of us around this direction, specific direction that we run the board, and that's the bond.
It is.
And the, under the understanding of Act 46, under the understanding of taking care of property, this is currently what our thinking is, at least in this, at this point in time to move forward with going to the voters, or to you, with an idea to go to the voters for a bond to take care of these issues.
Right.
So.
Have you determined, John, what the, well, if you haven't, I'm sure we'll want to see this, but what the tax impact is?
Yes, it's pretty small. Let's see, we'll go back to this one. Our, our tax, it's 2.91 cents here of the tax rate, which is $1.63, I believe. And here, we go down to 1.8. You know, it's actually, our debt services, anybody who come in here cold would say, wow, your debt service is as low as I've ever seen for a school district that has five buildings and a transportation area and that kind of thing.
But basically, it would ramp back up to that 2.9 by 2020.
That's right. That's right. We'll have more specifics on individual homes and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think obviously then the question comes up when you start looking at '18, '19, '20, '21 is, you know, where are we at? The other decision-making decisions around what we're, you know, if you're going to do anything, what does that mean? And then compounding.
And I remember what I was going to say. This citizen budget group, our board relies on that to get feedback. So I'll have three or four meetings and go through, like, the impact of Act 46 in these projects, but other things that the group wants to deal with. I mean, it's really the whole budget, anything you want to know. So the board then really wants to get feedback, especially in the second week of January, to say, okay, what do you think about this? Because they're dealing with a whole lot of other things just besides the budget, so that's what I want to emphasize.
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you hearing, John, from other business managers that schools that might face the double taxation over their cap are going to look for bonding options? Or are they just going to go at risk for the double taxation?
I think some, some are going to go for the double taxation. They think it can pass. But, but our case is a little bit unique because we are so low with our debt service. So I'm not sure what they're all going to do, but, you know, I know everyone's-
Do you have off the top of your head what percentage of the budget they run in debt service?
Oh, they do, or us?
Well, both.
Well, we're at one and-
What's typical?
We're one and a half percent. You can still be financially viable and have a 10% of your, of your budget.
So other districts that are running that high in this thing?
No, no, we won't get anywhere near that.
No.
Other districts.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's, it's, I know of a big city close by that's a lot higher than this.
So our cap right now, without hitting double taxation's 1.72%, right?
Correct.
And we know, we know already that the healthcare benefits would take up about 40% of that?
That's right.
Increase?
At the current. Current mix of employees.
Mix. So the bond recommendation is really to address the stewardship projects without hitting the operational budget?
Yes.
But the expectation is it still would stay, certainly for the next operating year, it's at the current low level of impact on taxes.
It definitely is, yeah. If we, even if we issued a bond today, there'd be no bonds maturing, maybe a little bit at the end of next year, but it's, there wouldn't, you couldn't have debt service for next year. Wouldn't increase very much, just principle. Right?
Okay.
Thanks, John.
All right. So we'll move on to, do you want to do a brief organizational structure?
Yeah, so again, I don't, I'm happy to take other questions from you. I mean, part of this was on here, like, you know, do we have an organizational structure? Do you have, you know, and so again, this is again, part of the work that Karen has done, really important, you know, when you can talk about the things that we're trying to do as a district-
do as a district, who is doing what, it does allow you to make, again, us in administration and leadership positions, to make some decisions around how we do that. And so, you know, my brief narrative that I did not send initially but followed, you know, this, the internal work that we're doing with master planning, planning, MTSS, curriculum, healthy schools, all of that work really is important that we're looking at the organizational structure and the backdrop. And those of you who know, whether we're talking about operational efficiencies, how are we, you know, onboarding people in the human service side around looking at criminal backgrounds and record checks, how are we taking transportation, all of those things, particularly as we continue to evolve as a school district. 10 years ago, you may have said safety and security wasn't that big of a deal. It's more of, it's more of an issue today, and where does that fall? So, again, those are, those are individual pieces, but I think the most important piece is the drivers for us around our ongoing need to ensure that we have educational vision for the future, right? And that's really that MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, looking at our plan, longer range. And so, we're positioning ourselves not just for next year, but for the down-the-road years around what we need to be successful. So, it's a tool that we are, we're using on a, I wouldn't say it should be more regular, but it's definitely a tool right now that's in play around the conversation in budgeting. So, you may have, and again, part of this is FTE information, you know, it's, it allows you to really look at, look at, you know, the structures that you probably don't, you know, you don't know as well as we do, but certainly helpful for us, helpful for you.
So, do we have job descriptions for all of these?
We do. We do. Some of them are older than others, but part of Karen's work has been working diligently to put those on a, on a cycle, in other words, to get them up to date, and then get them on a, on a, a cycle of review. And again, we are on some of those, we are on a re-review for some of those that, you know, we recognize that weren't working the way we wanted to. So, anyway, that's our, that's our org chart.
We'll keep that handy for budget season.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item 11, 2.8.
So, compensation and benefits, this is back to you again, highlighted in yellow. I know that we were rushed a little bit last time, although I think we-
No, we went through it, you weren't here.
Yes.
We saved it for you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We did save it.
We were mostly through it.
All right. Well, I understood that maybe you were rushed, and so-
We weren't rushed, we were just waiting for you.
All right. That was nice of you, Julie.
We were. I mean, we can, like, do the top page, is what I'm saying, right?
We could do that.
Yeah, I think we talked through the whole thing.
We did.
Aren't you efficient, see? See, John, you did a good job.
We thought we should hold off approval until you were actually in attendance.
We wanted you to glow in the approval.
There you go.
So, why don't I go through this? Detail policy one, the superintendent shall not change the superintendent's own compensation and benefits. Is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
The data is adequate?
Yes.
And we are in compliance? Detail policy two reads, the superintendent shall not promise or imply permanent or guaranteed employment. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yep.
And in compliance?
Yep.
And detail policy three, the superintendent shall not establish or change compensation and benefits that deviate materially from the geographical or professional market for the skills employed. Interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yep.
Yes.
And compliance? Detail four, superintendent shall not create obligations over a longer term than revenues can be safely projected, in no event longer than one year, and in all events, subject to losses in revenue. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yep.
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
All right, and the, oh, I'm missing, yeah. Detail policy five, superintendent shall not establish or change pension benefits so as to cause unpredictable or inequitable situations. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
So, the overall policy on compensation and benefits reads that with respect to employment, compensation and benefits to employees, consultants, contract workers, the superintendent shall not cause or allow jeopardy to financial integrity or to public image. And across the board, I believe we have reasonable interpretation, adequate data, and we are in compliance.
Yes.
All right. Aren't you glad we waited?
Yep. It was easy, that was good. Everybody talked about it.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, we'll move to, move to agenda item 12, setting the agenda for the December 2nd meeting.
Yep. So, there's one that, one add that I wanted to make sure around the homeless shelter conversation would need to be added, and I think we'll add it as a, I'd like to add it as a separate item.
Do we need to put student voice back on here?
Voice back on, yep, that's right, yeah.
We'll try to get whatever Norelli sent circulated ahead of time.
And not see an email either on that.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Conversations about the homeless shelter with, like, law enforcement in the city, cover-
Well, I, what I would recommend, I mean, I think that, what I'm thinking is just to get information from John. I cannot say his last name, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to put you on the spot here. But nonetheless, I think it would be good just to hear, he would like to come, I think just share that. I have definitely told him that, you know, there's some, at least on my part, I have some initial concerns around the proximity, around, you know, around the location next to our children and students that are traveling back and forth. He'd like to come and just share with you, and I think the follow-up of that would be generated questions and concerns, and you would likely direct me to be watchful of when it goes to the DRB, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and so-
I think those are all true, and I would also have their own children as well, so it could be an advantage for them.
Right, yep, yep. So, again, I think just hearing a little bit more about the proposal would be appropriate first step. So, I will put that in there, and the student voice.
And anything we can get ahead of time on the solar array would be helpful, especially if you want to actually-
Yep.
On our budget schedule, we had the recap from the department, the commissioner of taxes, it usually comes out. I can do that by just a memo, if it helps time on this, or where we can do it, either way. But, see, the letter doesn't by law have to come out till November 30th, and our meeting's December 2nd, so it's, they try to get it out before Thanksgiving, so I don't see it here, but that's why I'm bringing it up.
So, do you want, I mean, so your suggestion, John, just to be clear, we'll put it out through email?
Well, we'll put it under-
And put it on the agenda?
We'll put it out under the superintendent's report. I'll highlight some things, and if you want to discuss it, great. If not, it's board's discretion.
Got it.
Good.
It's a recommendation only.
It is, right.
That's right.
Yeah.
I just note that I will not be available on the second.
On the second?
Okay.
All right, so we'll move to any future agenda items that need to be addressed, deleted, added dates.
I made no changes to those thus far. I haven't added anything or taken it off.
Agenda item 14, consider the minutes of the November 4th meeting. Any comments, changes? Seeing none, those are accepted by consensus, the November 6th meeting?
I think we have one suggested change, because we could have one, you were on phone, that we might want to put that motion was approved unanimously-
Okay.
For clarity, since we are not all present.
All right, so with that change to the November 6th meeting, those are approved. And the November 9th meeting? Seeing no changes, those are also approved. Move on to the consent agenda.
We have one individual, Tori Olson, a .2 FTE technology education teacher at the high school. There was a question that was asked in the board packet, and again, based on an individual that you had hired. And again, this is, again, part of the sections that were still open, so that, again, we're still within the budgeted FTE.
So, is the total for Nisocapola's position one? Or have we hired above one?
No, it's one.
It's one? Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And you don't need approved action on this, correct? Okay. Any other questions on this .2 FTE hire? Okay. On to agenda item 16, any questions or comments on AP orders 18, 19, or 20? All right, move on to agenda 17, this requires action, and there's an AP order checked to the Howard Center in the amount of $83,493.27. Do you want to cover that briefly, or John?
Well, you know, usually you see that because of the social work, the school-based conditions, but this is, does reflect a higher level of service, because this, these are all referencing September's services, so I think for the next time, well, for the budget too, we'll have a projection of what's going on there.
So, this was, this was one-month services for all, I noticed it was for a lot of alternative education.
Yes, that's right. It's not just, once again, you usually only see the school-based condition, so you're going to see that again, because that's over $50,000 on its own.
And you, this is an area that, you know, we could ask, I could ask on your behalf, we could get a little bit of information from Joanne Godak around kind of current trending activity. Again, we have to be sensitive to individual-name students, or, you know, anything like that, but certainly could get some ideas around some of the processes that are going on, concerns, and Howard Center certainly is an important service provider.
Is there anything unexpected in this?
No, the one thing I did with one of Joanne's people is confirm that it is all one months, so we do need to dig a little deeper to see if-
Is this separately reimbursed for, some of it?
Yes, from the state.
Yeah, there's varying reimbursements, but-
But your suggestion is it's a possible new run rate?
That's right.
Okay.
Because if you took this times 10, that'd be a lot. Of course, it doesn't include the school-based conditions, which is 250, so.
So, we, we'll talk amongst ourselves a little bit, and it may be advantageous to have Joanne come and do a little bit of some, have a conversation with you, and well as kind of the expected, you know, where is this going to bring us?
Well, could I make a suggestion that maybe this could be covered in an email, or rather than wait for another two weeks?
Sure.
Just to get an idea of-
Around what's going on.
What the run rate is, kind of what, why the unexpected increase?
No problem.
And is this anticipated? And then we're not waiting for a discussion about it, and also not violating any individual student privacy?
Mm-hmm.
So, with that follow-up action, do I have a motion to approve this AP order to Howard Center?
So, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And then motion passes?
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
And a second? All in favor?
Look, you're right close to 10 o'clock.
We're adjourned.